All right. Call to order the -- What kind of meeting we're going?
Council conference.
Council conference.
Council conference. All right. Call to order the council conference meeting of March 23, 2020. First item on the agenda is Norman Arts Council in the city of Norman. Thank you. Thank you. Close them.
I don't have one of those tricky chairs. It's going to throw me backwards. Thank you. All right, good to go.
Good for.
Good evening. And for those of you who don't know me or don't know me well, I'm Erin Gavigan. I'm the executive director of the Norman Arts Council. And we've been invited here this evening to share with you a presentation, a proposal that we have to the city of Norman. So a little bit of background before we get into this. The Norman Arts Council has a long history of collaboration with the city of Norman to benefit the arts. Over 40 years ago, we started the hotel tax granting program. It was established through ordinance with the city of Norman that 25% of the hotel tax collected would go to the arts in Norman and that we would re-grant those funds out to the arts organizations that we support in the community. Since that time, we've branded out over $4 million of public funds through that program. In 2007, the Norman Public Arts Board was formed. Little background on this, the Public Arts Board was established by a city ordinance to fund the acquisition of works of art by the city, to provide a means to select those works of art, and to provide for the maintenance and repair of works in the collection. As part of that ordinance, the Public Arts Board was created, and it was created to function as a subcommittee of the Norman Arts Council, but it also operates as a board of the city of Norman. The Public Arts Board is primarily funded through voluntary donations that the citizens make on their city utility bills. So that's the primary source of funding. Occasionally, there has been private fundraising that has happened with the support of the Norman Arts Council, and notably supporters have been OEC, Fowler Auto Group, and Toyota About a little less than 10 years after the Norman Public Arts Board was formed, the city of Norman contracted with the Norman Arts Council to administer the Norman Forward 1% for Art projects. This is the mission of the Norman Public Arts Board. It is to work to enhance Norman's image locally, regionally, and nationally by ensuring the creation of the highest quality of art for display in our communities' public places. Public art in Norman is rapidly expanding, and this is largely due to the successes of Norman Forward and the 1% for Art that was tied to that. Beyond Norman, public art is expanding exponentially as well, and it's expanding beyond the boundaries of what we commonly think of as public property or public spaces. So to stay relevant in public art, we believe that Norman actually needs to pay more attention to this program. These are our current Public Arts Board members. Public Arts Board members are appointed to the Public Arts Board. Several of those are mayoral appointments, and then there are also positions that are appointed through the Norman Arts Council Board, our Arts and Humanities Roundtable, and also Visit Norman. And then we have ex officio board members, which are staff members of both the city of Norman and the Norman Arts Council. So the reason that we're here tonight is that the Norman Arts Council is proposing to the city of Norman that the Public Arts Board becomes solely a committee of the Norman Arts Council, whereby we would form the Norman Public Arts Committee. And I believe there's five really positive reasons for doing this. It clearly defines the legal standing of public arts in Norman. It allows for more community involvement. It allows the committee to work more nimbly. It merges the like missions and actually expands the current definition of public art in Norman, and it provides full-time staff expertise in public art administration, nonprofit administration, fundraising, and marketing, and we'll go into each of these in a little bit more detail. So benefit number one, defining the legal status. There has been ongoing confusion about what body, whether the Norman Arts Council or the city of Norman, has the legal responsibilities and therefore the oversight of the actions and activities of the Public Arts Board. Clarifying this is extremely important to the Norman Arts Council and something that we've been trying for multiple years now to have resolved. The Norman Arts Council carries the fiduciary responsibilities for the Public Arts Board and has since its inception, and that means that the financial activities of the Public Arts Board are recorded on our 990s to the IRS. And we're happy to continue to do that, but we would really like this to become a committee of the Norman Arts Council. The NAC on its own has very thoughtfully written bylaws and policies, and all of our committees are guided by these, and they all have input into those policies and those bylaws, and input into edits as those committees grow and they morph in a natural progression of programming and missions. Benefit number two is increased community involvement. Having the Norman Public Arts Committee as part of the Norman Arts Council presents opportunities to more fully understand how each of those bodies work and to have constructive and open dialogue, which would lead to both being more efficient. Working together is always more productive. It would also be easier for the Norman Public Arts Committee to recruit active committee members. Public art is a very timely and popular discipline of arts, and we've become aware at the Norman Arts Council that there are members of the community who are really interested in participating and could be really helpful to the advancement of public art in Norman. Currently, there is kind of this general air of mystery around the Public Arts Board and how it operates. Under the Norman Arts Council, the community would have increased awareness of public art processes, which helps us to make public art more accessible. Right before I started doing these presentations, these series of presentations, I heard from a member of Norman Next. It was a little over a month ago. It was a Q&amp;A session that we were actually hosting at Main Site, which is the space that we operate out of. And it was a Q&amp;A session with then-mayor-elect Heikala prior to his taking office, and one of the Norman Next members spoke up about a frustration that they have, that there seems to be, within the city's boards and commissions, a lack of young professionals involved, and that he had specifically applied multiple times to be part of the Public Arts Board. And even though he has a master's in museum studies, he obviously has a keen interest in art and wants to be involved, he was never appointed and never received feedback as to why, as to his questions about why he wasn't appointed. The Norman Arts Council is making a strong commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion in the arts. We formed an Equity and Justice Committee that is to guide the NAC on this, and public art access to underserved communities, artists, and volunteers is high on the list of priorities for the Equity and Justice Committee and also for the Norman Arts Council. In short, we really need to make this committee more accessible if we hope to serve the community properly. Under the Norman Arts Council, that individual that I just mentioned would have been welcome to join the committee without need of formal appointment. And so, speaking of formal appointments, the third benefit is that this would really free up the committee to act more nimbly. Over the past five years, the Public Arts Board has had 11 appointments, and with the exception of two of those who are still currently on the board in this room, appreciate them being here, with the exception of those two, every one of those 11 appointments resigned before their term was up. So appointments work in some cases and not in others. We really want to be able to open up this committee and this service to anyone who is interested. Many organizations are struggling right now to have enough volunteers and members to be effective and to maintain quorums regularly. As a committee of the Norman Arts Council, the Public Art Committee's memberships would not be legally tied to open meeting laws and quorums, which is actually a huge responsibility lifted off of them, and this is what allows them to act more nimbly. They could meet when needed, and even at the last minute, they could even use alternative ways of working, like Zoom and online whiteboard applications. These are really important for a group of people from diverse backgrounds and who are actively involved in project implementation as this committee would be. Merging and expanding is benefit number four. To have a meaningful public art program in Norman, instead of bifurcating these two groups that are doing public art and duplicating efforts, sometimes achieving less, it really makes more sense to unite and join forces to the benefit of all who are involved, sharing resources, not duplicating work. There is currently some confusion about where to go with public art questions or projects in Norman, since there are currently two different groups facilitating, the Public Arts Board for some projects, the Norman Arts Council for others. So by creating one solid public art entity, we could easily clarify that confusion. By integrating public art into the Norman Public Arts Committee of the Arts Council, we'd also be able to expand the definition of public art, to include projects that are within the public view but not necessarily on public property. For example, there's already strong support for the Norman Arts Council to start a mural program, thinking of programs around the metro like Plaza Walls in Oklahoma City or the Sunny Days Mural Festival, which has recently happened in Edmond. And we're often asked to partner with or advise private businesses for large-scale works of art. We're currently working with Norman Economic Development Coalition to create a large mural on the side of the New Commerce Building. So as part of the Norman Arts Council, public art would be free to pursue these expanded projects that are within the public view but not necessarily restricted to public property. The Arts Council would continue to work with the city on public projects like our Artful Inlets project. We continue to collaborate with the Parks Department and the Public Works Department on future projects that are on city property as well. So that aspect of public arts would not change. And benefit number five is full-time staff support. The Public Arts Board doesn't have an office. They don't have their own staff. However, as the Public Arts Committee, they would have the home and the time and the talents of the Norman Arts Council. This would also make it easier for them to work with the Norman Arts Council Board and our other committees. It would create a more open relationship between public arts and our committees and would allow for collaboration on programs that might overlap between committees. Importantly, this would also streamline fundraising. Fundraising for public art would be integrated into all of the Norman Arts Council's fundraising efforts. Our marketing expertise could be used to create a campaign to raise awareness of utility bill donations, what I mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, how the Public Arts Board primarily receives its funding. At its height, which was about 12 years ago, the utility bill donations generated approximately $20,000 annually for public art. That's a modest amount for public art. To put that in perspective, most of our Norman Forward project budgets begin at $80,000 and go up to $200,000. Today, that fund generates about $8,000 annually. So the amount of funds that are being generated through utility bill donations has been cut more than in half. But we could work to bring this type of support up through our marketing efforts, and then as a 501(c)(3), we could even add to that. As a 501(c)(3), we can qualify and apply for public and private grants to support public art, and there are a lot of them out there. And also, there would be no concern that fundraising efforts would duplicate or confuse the public. Under one entity, we could create very clear fundraising plans that support both Norman Arts and public arts in particular. So how would this work? The Norman Arts Council Board has considered this transition to be necessary for quite some time and approved this proposal that I'm making to you all tonight at their June 17 board meeting. Since then, it has been approved by all current Public Art Board members, and just a few weeks ago, it was presented to the Business and Community Affairs Committee, which is what brought us here tonight. The Norman Arts Council would continue management of the public funds for public arts, and those utility bill funds would be restricted to projects on city property. And again, we hope to increase that. So that's not going to change. The way that we have always managed those public funds coming in through the utility bills, the city collects them quarterly, they cut a check to the Norman Arts Council, and we earmark those funds for public art projects. That would not change. We've had a long relationship with the city of just this kind of agreement. The NAC has been responsible for millions of dollars of public funding through the hotel tax for grants and through the Norman Forward 1% for Art projects. So we feel really confident that we can continue to manage those utility bill donations but without the complexities of having a joint committee that's beholden to both the Norman Arts Council and the city of Norman for its operations. And these are the first goals of the Public Arts Committee, to expand involvement in the committee, to have a public art strategic planning session, which would be funded by the Norman Arts Council, that creation of the mural program that I mentioned, some advocacy. We'd like to advocate for a percent for art to be included as part of Norman Forward too, should that happen, and also to advocate for a permanent percent for art program in Norman. So anytime there are new city facilities that are constructed or renovated, or new parks, or park renovations, or even public works projects, that there would be a percent for art tied to those as well. And we're really excited to build artist-initiated projects and a process and funding mechanism for those, and that would be, this is another one of these benefits of having the Public Arts Committee as part of the NAC, would be able to collaborate that across several committees, Public Arts, our Programs Committee, our Granting Committee. So the NAC Board has board members who are really excited to be active in the Norman Public Arts Committee, and like I said, we're aware of community members as well. We want to make this a very open committee to join so that we can expand public art access and education throughout the community. We really believe that public art is at an important juncture in Norman. There's exciting possibilities ahead, and the NAC has already committed funding to strategic planning, and we would want to embark on that right away. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of you might have.
Are there any questions from Ms. Catherine?
I asked mine at the --
Yeah. I don't really have questions. I just wanted to say that, again, as I said at Baca, I really appreciate this. I think that there's definitely a need for this, and it will increase our public outreach, if you will, for arts, and I think that there's a lot of community members that want to get involved, both at the committee level and then just in arts in general in our community. I think it's a great way to give back, and I think it's a great way to display what people in our community want to share, and I love to see the murals around town, so I'm excited to see what this will do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Erin, I have a question. In the alley on the north side of Main Street, couple blocks east, there are murals that are on the parking lot facing side of these walls.
Oh, yes, on the Gray Street parking lot.
Yeah, but there's nothing on the back side, and it seems like, wow, there we have these great canvases just waiting for somebody to do a thing.
Absolutely.
Is that a possibility?
Yes, yeah. I mean, that's exactly the type of space that the Plaza District turned into their rotating mural program.
It is awesome. It's wonderful. Thank you for doing it.
I just have one comment. Oklahoma City was recently named the best city for public art in the United States for the second year in a row, and we got to dethrone them.
Yes. Yeah, so this will require ordinance amendments, and we may address some of it through a contract amendment. We talked a little bit about that, but we'll bring those forward. We'll get those finalized.
How long do you anticipate that'll take? A long time or a short time?
No, it won't take too long. I'm hoping to have it done in the next 30 days.
You skate. Well, thank you. I appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Erin.
One of the things I texted Tiffany and Anthony about, to watch the participation in the online, well, the bill pay portion where you can contribute to public art, where that kind of went through a peak and we're not where we were, the ability to reach out and communicate that and share that, I mean, we have, you know, customers who may have participated, moved away, and then we have new customers that moved here and may not have just recognized what that opportunity looks like. So I think we'll find a spot in some of our weekly newsletters and push that information back up to the public as well.
It could be, because a lot of us pay by bill pay.
Yes.
You don't even see them.
Yeah, yeah. So it's figuring out how to get a newer system to incorporate the voluntary donations as well.
I open it, peek at the amount, and throw it away.
No, even peek.
If Oklahoma City can just get people to walk around and look at that.
Well, thank you very much for taking the time.
Thank you for having me. So we should just work with Catherine now?
With Catherine, and we'll get everything on the right road so that everything works for you, and then we'll vote on it in a meeting.
Consensus achieved.
Consensus achieved.
Thank you all. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. As for the purpose of this meeting, we are adjourned until 6:30.
Thank you so much.
I'll entertain a motion to place items one through twenty on the consent docket. Motion in second. There's a motion on the floor to place items one through twenty on the consent docket. Council members, you may cast your votes.
The consent docket was approved unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, non-consent items. I'm going to read you a statement. Comments will be limited to thirty minutes on each item. Fifteen minutes in favor and fifteen minutes opposed. Did I miss a vote?
Oh, we missed, correct.
Thank you for correcting me. Okay, I thought we did that. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the consent docket. Motion in second. Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? Good. Motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Council members, you may cast your votes.
Also unanimous.
Thank you, Councilmember Schuler, for keeping me in order. Comments limited to thirty minutes in total on each item. Fifteen minutes in favor and fifteen minutes opposed. Participants may speak one time up to three minutes per person. No speaker's time can be yielded to another speaker. Comments received will be limited to the motion on the floor only. This is a regular session of city council where business will be conducted. House rules are also posted in the back of the room and displayed on the screen behind me. Attendees are asked to abide by the said rules throughout the meeting. Outbursts and interruptions will not be tolerated by any person. Next item is non-consent items. Item twenty-one. Final site development plan and final plat for the Norman Regional Health System Porter Campus Section Two A planned unit development and deferral/waiver of street paving, drainage, and sidewalks. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the final plat.
Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority, meeting of August 23rd, 2022. Madam Clark?
Councilmember Studley?
Here.
Councilmember Schuler?
Here.
Councilmember Lynn?
Here.
Councilmember Grant?
Here.
Councilmember Tortorello?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
Councilmember Foreman is absent. Mayor Heikala?
I am here. Would you join me in a pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Council announcements.
I just wanted to thank everyone that went out. Or today, if you haven't already, you have 30 minutes left. Please go out and vote. We have some pretty important propositions. And that's all I've got.
That's all you got. Councilmember?
Yes, I would.
Whoop. Would you hit her mic?
We good? Yes? Okay, good. Just would like to thank all of the Ward Two residents and other residents of the city that came out to the ward meeting last week to hear about the propositions that we are voting on today. So I hope you've had the opportunity to go out and cast your ballots. If not, like Councilmember Studley said, you have 30 more minutes. And those are all the announcements that I have for today.
Thank you. Councilmember?
No announcements.
Yes, thank you to the Ward Four residents who came out to our town hall. Also, I hope you voted today. And I don't have any other announcements.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Tortorello?
Hey, I want to thank everyone who showed up for my town hall last Thursday at Bibb Smokehouse. You know, we want to support those businesses out in Ward Five. And as you know, that place has changed hands so many times. But I can tell you, that's the best barbecue on that part of town. So if you've got time tonight or this week, stop by. But other than that, thank you for showing up tonight.
Councilmember?
Thank you. I also want to thank everyone who attended my Ward Seven meeting at Reeves Park this weekend on Sunday. We had a few people show up, and we were there for a couple hours and talked about the ballot initiatives, affordable housing, public transit, the turnpike, water, all sorts of stuff. So it was a good time. It was slightly raining, but we were under the overhang. So it was actually pretty nice. So I appreciate those that came out. Please feel free to reach out to me anytime. Cell phone number is on the city website and my city email as well. So if you ever have any questions about what's going on in Norman, even if I'm not your ward representative, please feel free to reach out anytime. I'm happy to talk. Also, I want to remind everybody, if you need reminding, that next Saturday is the first game day of the year. And so, you know, it gets pretty chaotic in Norman, especially around campus. So a very exciting time, in my opinion, in my experience growing up here. But just, I would encourage everybody to practice a little bit of patience and understanding for those. Same thing with school. There's lots of students here that have never been to Norman before. They've never driven in Norman. I always, every year, I come across students who may be from very rural areas, and they're not used to living in a very urban area. They're not used to all the traffic. They're not used to people walking in the street or biking in the street. So I would just encourage everybody to have patience and understanding as everybody kind of gets their footing and becomes more familiar with being back to school here in Norman. Thank you.
Councilmember?
No announcements.
Excellent. Well, I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight and participating in city government, and it's a wonderful thing to have you here. We welcome you. All right. Consent docket. I'll entertain a motion to place items one through 20 on the consent docket. A motion in second. There's a motion on the floor to place items one through 20 on the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
The consent docket was approved unanimously.
Okay, non-consent items. I'm going to read you a statement. Comments will be limited to 30 minutes on each item. 15 minutes in favor and 15 minutes opposed.
Don't we have to actually vote? Some of the things I got that you were against, too, I think that's what we did.
Did I miss a vote?
Oh, we missed, correct.
Thank you for correcting me. Okay. I thought we did that. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the consent docket. Motion in second. Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? Good. Motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Also unanimous.
Thank you, Councilmember Schuler, for keeping me in order. Comments limited to 30 minutes in total on each item. 15 minutes in favor and 15 minutes opposed. Participants may speak one time, up to three minutes per person. No speaker's time can be yielded to another speaker. Comments received will be limited to the motion on the floor only. This is a regular session of city council where business will be conducted. House rules are also posted in the back of the room and displayed on the screen behind me. Attendees are asked to abide by the said rules throughout the meeting. Outbursts and/or interruptions will not be tolerated by any person. Next item is non-consent items. Item 21. Final site development plan and final plat for the Norman Regional Health System Porter Campus, Section 2A, planned unit development and deferral/waiver of street paving, drainage, and sidewalks. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the final plat. I have a motion in second. I'd like to recognize Mr. Sean Rieger, attorney for the applicant, to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't see a mouse here.
No.
Is it behind the screen? Behind the screen, there we go. Sorry about that. Okay. Thank you, Bryce. Apologize. Thank you very much. Let me just give you a quick update. The reason we're here is for a final plat item. It is rare for you to hear a final plat item on discussion docket. There's a reason we're doing that tonight, because of a request for deferral of improvements, and I'll discuss that with you briefly. Let me just give you a quick refresher on how we came here. This is the North Porter Campus of the Norman Regional Health System. You might recall that this has been an ongoing project between the City of Norman and the Norman Regional Health System to transform this facility into its next phase. So the existing campus you see there on the screen. Back prior, earlier in this year, you approved a new site plan for this development. And part of that site plan include a property swap between the City of Norman and Norman Regional Health System. You might recall, this was a 75-year menagerie of property interests that were owned and leased by a bunch of different entities. We cleaned all that up, and now the City of Norman, thanks to the City Attorney's Office, helped greatly on this. City of Norman now owns that lower right piece, which is the Senior Center Wellness Center. And Norman Regional Health System now owns the remainder of it that you see on the left. There are a bunch of future plans and future uses. But most importantly for tonight, we're focused on the two on the south. The Senior Center, that is ongoing now, the city's property that they own. And the next phase, and the pod talked about this happening in phases, the next phase is the Behavioral Health Center, right next to it. And you see that on the lower center of the screen. That's just a very schematic conceptual of what eventually this facility may look like. You see on the lower left, the two facilities of the Senior Center and the Behavioral Health Center. And there, you see the site plans existing and proposed side by side. You have seen all of this before. This is the PowerPoint that you saw back in January, I believe it was. But this will kind of show you what we're talking about tonight. The Wellness Center underway now on the lower right. The Behavioral Health Center is the next piece to go forward. And you can see, as those boxes are put on top of the existing site plan, there is already Johnson Street in place that comes into the property, at least as a private property item, and connects to these facilities. And so we continue to have that piece there. It will not change until this hospital is completely transformed, which will happen later, once the health plaques on Tecumseh is finished and the Highway Nine project is finished. But that won't happen until those are done. So this facility will stay as it is. This new roadway will not go into place until those facilities are done. So what we're requesting tonight, basically, is for you to approve this final plat with the existing road system there. This is a refresher. The preliminary plat was approved with those two platted lots to be done. And final plat is before you tonight for that. City Council approved the preliminary plat on this in January. August 19th, the Development Committee approved the plans for the behavioral health. This is the actual final plat. You rarely see these or talk about them, but this is the legal plat of the lot and block that would be approved by you tonight. This is what we're talking about in the final development plan. So this is the Behavioral Health Center, as it would be built. And what we're talking about tonight, the only reason I'm standing before you, and I apologize to that, Terry Haynes of SMC would have been standing there, but he couldn't make it tonight. So I'm basically a stand-in, and hopefully, I will do the best I can to explain this. But that street right there, Wellness Way, is part of the final plat tonight. We're requesting that we defer the construction of that for very, hopefully, obvious reasons, in that there is already a street there. Johnson Street comes in at the same point, and you see it outlined in blue right there. So what we're requesting of you tonight is approval of the final development site plan that you see on the screen, the final plat, which is the lot and block, and the deferral or waiver of the street construction of Wellness Way and the cost to be waived and deferred until we actually do that project later at such time that the hospital transforms. That's it. Hopefully, I've explained it as simply as I could. That's the request, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions from council regarding the question? Councilmember Lynn? No, not me.
Thank you for the presentation.
You're on, Kelly.
Okay. Are we good now?
It's on, Kelly.
How about now? Yeah. Okay. Like, I can hear the difference when it's not on. Thank you for the presentation. I think you were very thorough, but just to be fully transparent and clear, Wellness Way will be constructed at a later date. So what we're doing tonight is just a deferral until we continue to build out the rest of this site plan.
Correct.
Just want to be fully clear about that. We're not changing anything that we've already approved. It's just a deferral until we kind of finalize future details. And, you know, having this site already fully built out right now is what is making that difficult to, or even impossible, to build it as proposed. Correct?
Very well said. I think that's correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's the only question I have.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Madam Clark?
Yes, we have two. I have Steve Ellis.
Yeah, you started this before I got up here.
I'm starting it over.
Thanks. I'm not bothered at all by the improvements deferment. I think that can make some good sense. I do want to speak against the waiver of the payment in lieu of actual activity that normally accompanies that deferment. Normally, a developer that's putting off something that they've promised to do in the final plat has to put up some earnest money. I think it's something like $300,000 in this case. And they're asking to be excused from that. And two things about that. The first of which is, I'm not sure that you can. So here's what the staff notes say on this proposal. With regard to the applicant's request of a waiver of the deferral fee, the city's code of ordinances does not currently allow a waiver. So you're being asked to do something that you don't have the authority to do. Staff also notes that this is kind of unprecedented. Staff has no record of previous requests for such a waiver from a private developer or from Norman Regional Health System. Part of the reason why I think it would be a mistake to pass this the way it is is because it sets you up with a bad precedent, right? I think the next time you try to charge that fee from someone, and you've deferred it for anybody, they're going to say, "Me, too." And then you'll have those worries that you have sometimes when developers try to sue you for sort of arbitrary and capricious application of law. And I think this would be arbitrary and capricious to not charge the fee that's in the current code, because it's not that much. It's not like it's going to stop anything. And they get the money back when they actually do the road. So it's just some earnest money. So asking developers for earnest money upfront is a good practice. There may be special interests in this case, but it's not very much money. It's not going to stop anyone from doing anything. So I think we should stick to the regular program and not waive the fee. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. I have Jade Cheshire. Thank you. Sorry to butcher that.
That was my bad. I didn't mean to sign up for this one. I meant to sign up for another one to speak on.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Okay. That's all I've got.
Any final comments from council regarding this question or legal? Would you turn Councilmember Schuler on, please?
Am I on?
No.
Yes. I can hear it. So Catherine, based on some questions here, I see in the staff report that it does say that their request for waiver for deferral fee is very uncommon, although the city has waived such costs for projects of its public trust, like the Norman Municipal Authority. So this has been done before, where we've waived the fee?
Yes, and it's only been limited to our public trust.
To date.
Today.
So do, I mean, are we opening ourselves up for precedent in this capacity? And do we have the, I mean, we have the ability to do it?
The language in the ordinance does not address waivers of this fee. We have done it before for our public trusts and our public trusts only, so I don't worry as much about setting a precedent with the hospital, because they are also a public trust, having the city as its sole beneficiary.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Other questions from council? Councilmember?
Same questions, actually.
Okay. Well, that was easy.
Yeah.
All right. Motion on the floor is to approve the final plat. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Final plat is approved unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 22. Contract with HCR Manor Care Incorporated, successor in interest to Four Seasons Nursing Center, in the amount of $2,450,000 for the purchase of property located at 1210 West Robinson, plus closing costs and authorizing the city manager to execute any documents on behalf of the City of Norman to effectuate the purpose. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the contract. I have a motion in second. Recognize Ms. Walker.
Can you help me, Bryce, with flipping the slides? Okay, thank you. So I'll just go through this pretty quickly. We did talk about this two weeks ago and then again last week. But this purchase contract is for a facility on 1210 West Robinson, built in 1968. It underwent a conversion in 2005 to a long-term acute care hospital. It's about 40,000 square feet. It's currently zoned RM6 multifamily. There's an existing 50-bed facility with a commercial kitchen and a pharmacy. It's been on and off the market for a number of years. Private party sale fell through last December, and the asking price has been $4 million. Back in 2021, when we first learned about the ARPA funds that were coming to the city, one of the objectives for the ARPA funds that was identified by council and also in the final rule issued by the government is affordable housing. So this was identified as a priority generally. And then, when the sale fell through in December, we began talking about this property as a potential solution. We got an appraisal in the spring. We hired a firm to just do some preliminary drawings and give us some estimates for remodeling. And then we talked to council about this in executive session to determine whether or not we wanted to make an offer. We did, and they accepted our offer. And so this item is the purchase and sale agreement. And then item 23 is the appropriation to fund the purchase and the renovations. So this is where it is on the map. You can see RM6 is the area in burnt orange. The red piece is a commercial piece of property, and then it's surrounded by single-family homes. So this is the drawing that the architecture firm provided for us. Remodel estimates range anywhere from $3 to $5 million, just depending on what we do. And of course, as we get more detailed plans, that estimate typically gets refined until it becomes more and more representative of the actual cost. But it would give us 28 studio apartments, a little less than 200 square feet each, 13 one-bedroom units that are a little less than 400 square feet, and four units of those, 41 units, would be ADA accessible. There's also an office area for the operator of the facility and any supportive services. So the entire cost is not just provide the rooms. It also includes this office space. So last week, we talked about this in more detail. So I pulled a couple of slides over from your presentation last week. The facility owner, it could be combined with the operator, and we could have an owner-operator arrangement. We could retain ownership. We could transfer it to the Norman Affordable Housing Corporation. The city has a longstanding relationship with them for affordable housing. Whoever owns would be responsible for maintenance and utilities, and they would retain the rent proceeds, which would then go back into the operation of the facility. Leasing would be done. There would be traditional leases, similar to what you would see if you were leasing an apartment, same type of enforcement. The Landlord-Tenant Act would apply. There would be behavior expectations within that lease. And if someone didn't meet them, they would be evicted. So for the supportive services, we plan to do an RFP for that. We have separate ARPA funding for that specific purpose, and it would be used to provide voluntary case management and life-improving services and encourage self-sufficiency. We talked a lot about last week about affordable housing and how housing vouchers work. This would be a project-based housing voucher program. Those are based upon the fair market rents that are established by HUD each year. Currently, they have deemed the fair market rent for a studio apartment to be $787 a month, and a one-bedroom apartment, $820 a month. That doesn't mean that that's what the tenants would be paying. That's what the project-based voucher would be paying that would go towards the overall cost of operating the facility and maintaining it and all those things. To be safe, we assumed a 7% vacancy rate, and so that's about $356,000 per year to go towards operations. If it's owned by the city or by a nonprofit, it would be exempt from property tax. We've gotten some data about the cost of utilities that we're able to obtain, because they're city utilities, from 2013, when the facility was fully operational. And then, of course, maintenance, insurance, and we'd want a reserve account for future capital expenses. What we would expect for the supportive services is they would be voluntary and be only available for the tenants of the facility and not for the general public. As I said, the Landlord-Tenant Act would apply here, so each tenant would have that lease, and there would be a clear understanding of what their rights and responsibilities are. If anyone was evicted, it would have to comply with the landlord-tenant law. And we anticipate policies to handle behavior, loitering, housekeeping, guests, pets, you know, drugs, illegal substances, things like that, to address all of those issues that you may see among the tenants. So with this contract for this item, we've had some questions, because this was built in 1968. There's a possibility of asbestos if it wasn't discovered in that 2005 renovation. We will do our due diligence in this period after we enter into the contract, like a residential property contract. You have a 60-day period, in this case, to do your inspections, to test for asbestos and lead-based paint and all that kind of thing. So we know whether or not there are issues with the property before we actually consummate the purchase. We would work on development of the supportive services, RFP, working with providers and those with lived experience to help us determine services, and then complete an allocation plan to access those home ARPA funds that are for this purpose. And then we'll finalize the development of the ownership and management structure and all the contracts that go along with that and the construction documents to make it usable for this purpose. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Councilmember Schuler?
Are we, I guess, a point of order? Are we taking questions on both 22 and 23 in conjunction? Or are we separating them out?
I said, we haven't separated out here. Do you want to ask, is there an overarching question between the two?
I can ask a question, and then we'll see what that is. So the $2.45 million that we are purchasing, using to purchase, potentially purchase this building, where is that money coming from?
Those are ARPA funds.
Okay. So that leads me to the next question. What are the allowable uses for appropriating and using money under the ARPA guidelines?
There are a number of allowable uses. Generally speaking, it should be responsive to the COVID-19 pandemic. However, there are certain things called out specifically in that final rule related to ARPA funds. And that includes affordable housing. It includes certain types of infrastructure projects. It includes certain types of economic development projects and things of that nature.
So we are strictly bound by the, what we are allowed to spend by the federal government for the specific dollars?
Correct. And if you don't spend them correctly, they will want their money back.
Right. So these are not discretionary, like our general fund, where we could spend on any, anything?
That's correct.
Okay. Can you explain the process for how the city has to enter into purchase agreements to purchase property? Like, what are the steps that we have to take that is different than your everyday citizen when they are trying to purchase a property?
Well, certainly, for our uses, it always depends on the end use of the property. But for us, we always get an appraisal, because we want to know we're not overspending tax dollars. So we did that in this case. The appraisal showed a value that was a little more than $1.5 million less than the asking price, and that's what we were able to negotiate. In our contracts, we always ask for the inspection. If we know we might have an asbestos problem or something like that, just based on the age of the building, we're going to want to do those inspections. We'll do a Phase One environmental study. And we do a lot to- And we do a lot to make sure we understand what we're buying and the condition it's in.
So another piece of that, do we, as council, have to approve? I guess, to be able to enter into a contract? We have to prove that before we can enter into a contract, which then would stipulate all of the, I guess, inspections and all of that kind of stuff. So we are at the beginning of that process. We cannot do inspections on the building until we take this action tonight.
Typically, we wouldn't want to spend the money to do the inspections unless we knew it was a property that we were interested in purchasing. So this item on your agenda tonight is the purchase and sell contract, but that doesn't mean it's going to close tomorrow or in two weeks. We're going to do all these inspections first. And if we get some bad data back, we'll be at a decision point with council to determine whether to move forward.
Right. So if we do go through and we find asbestos in the building, you will come back to council, and we will have a decision to make on whether we want to terminate that contract and actually go forward with the full purchase of the property?
Correct.
Okay. I think those are all my questions right now.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. So we have, we've heard the number 9 million mentioned and thrown out there by some. There seems to be a little bit of confusion about that number. Would you mind going over why that's out there and what the real amount that we're looking at spending is?
So the appropriation item that goes along with this includes the purchase price of $2.4 million plus estimated renovation costs. And the total amount that you all allocated towards affordable housing for ARPA funds is $6.4 million. And so that's what we intend to spend. If renovations cost more than that, we would value-engineer that to stay within that budget of these one-time funds. I know other dollar amounts have been discussed, and I believe it's referencing those home ARPA funds. And so that's a different source of federal funding to fund the operation and the supportive services.
And so the, the, I think what people are seeing is that on item 23, it says $6.4 million. And they're seeing 2.4 on the item above it and putting those together.
Yeah, 2.4 is included.
But the 6.4, actually, on item 23, that 6.4 actually includes the 2.4. So it's not 9, it is 6.4.
Correct.
Just to be clear about that. And then the, we talked a little bit about city costs going forward. If we were to purchase this building, what commitment, what would we be looking at from the city's standpoint going forward? Because my impression is that we would own the building, and like with other buildings we own, we take care of maintenance and utilities. But are we going to be expected to pay for operating any kind of services or facility there?
No. I think the goal here is to use those project-based vouchers to fund the operations completely. We're entering into similar agreements with some of our other new facilities that are coming online, where we're contracting with the operators. And the idea in all of these agreements is that the operator is handling the income through the project-based vouchers and the expenses of operating without any additional supplement from the city.
Okay.
And Councilmember Holman, along that line, we are also, at the City of Norman, considered an entitlement city, meaning we receive a direct allocation of federal dollars through the Community Development Block Grant Program, administered by the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development. And that has historically been our funding source for investments in affordable housing. And in most of our past efforts, they've been, you know, houses done one and two at a time. We do some rehabilitation work on existing houses. We've built a couple on some infill vacant lots, et cetera. But we would continue to focus primarily on those federal dollars from the Department of Housing and Urban Development to be the primary funding source for council's desired efforts into the arena of affordable housing.
And the intent being to provide affordable housing options to people that would otherwise lose their current housing and become homeless?
And there are a number of statuses by folks in the community who might full well take advantage of this particular housing option and others going forward. You know, typically, we're on the housing side. You know, the Section 8 housing voucher program is one component of assistance available to those who could literally be experiencing homelessness with a Section 8 housing voucher in hand today. We know we've had properties recently lose their Section 8 status because the properties did not meet HUD standards any longer. And those people have, you know, since been evicted because they weren't able to pay the rent without the voucher.
And what's the timeline when you get one? How long do you have? 60 days?
60 days to find a spot or risk losing that voucher and having to get back in line.
And our inventory in Norman of available housing for that has gotten smaller?
Yes, we have lost properties. We really haven't added many in the recent past in terms of the portfolio available to Section 8 voucher holders.
And would you agree that rents in Norman continue to rise like other cities in the state of Oklahoma?
Absolutely have. And the definition of affordability also continues to change.
So it's becoming more costly to live, and there's fewer places to pick from?
That is correct.
We talked about standards for tenants. So to receive that voucher, they have to meet certain criteria. And that includes things like drugs and alcohol. And does, do HUD standards, would HUD standards allow for a registered sex offender to live in this facility?
That one, I don't remember off the top of my head.
It's within 2,000 feet of a school.
Oh, wow. Yeah, you can't live within 2,000 feet of a school regardless.
So they wouldn't be allowed to stay in this location?
No.
No convicted felons are allowed to stay here? Is that how the home law is as well? Okay. And you mentioned the onsite services. If there were services provided, that they would be restricted to just the residents of the facility, nobody else? There would be no meals or a reason for people that don't live there to go there?
Correct.
That's my understanding. And as Councilmember Schuler mentioned, if we get to a point in exploring this purchase, we find out it has lead paint and asbestos and maybe some other issue we don't even know about, that would clearly be more costly. I mean, the library is $1 million for that issue. So that would definitely change my perspective, potentially, about purchasing that building, for sure. But we would have the ability to say, "We're not willing to spend more money to fix that problem. We're out."
Correct.
And that would be a decision that would have to come back to council for us to make.
At this point, we recognized the removal of about 22,000 square feet of asbestos in the former central library, cost about $1 million. And there would not be an extra $1 million of ARPA dollars available. So council would only have one other funding option at that point, and that would be through discretionary general fund, and staff would not recommend that.
Okay. That's all the questions I have right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Tortorello?
I want to thank my council members for bringing up these important facts to discuss the purchase process, the inspection process, how we would operate the facilities. And these are all good questions. I have one last question, is that have we explored other affordable home opportunities or alternatives other than purchasing this building, such as other buildings for sale or other ideas?
Staff has not. Shortly after the home-based study was delivered and a product like this was mentioned as a year-one goal and objective for an approach to combat housing shortages and homelessness. This particular property was back on the market after falling out of escrow. And so staff made an early inquiry as to its availability. And in terms of a housing project, this has received the Lyon Sheriff's staff's attention since that home-based study has come out. So we have not spent a whole bunch of staff time in pursuit of other facilities.
Would you say it's fair to say that there might be other opportunities out there for us to look at if we give additional guidance to staff to come up with other alternatives to how we spend this money and how we look at affordable housing overall?
We are always in pursuit of the next best solution when it comes to affordable housing. I think there's a number out there in terms of about 9,000 affordable housing units short of the current demand. And the pursuit of those solutions, not solely on the shoulders of just a handful of staff members who focus a lot of their energy in the world of housing and urban development, but, you know, with our partners at the Norman Housing Authority as well.
And so you would also agree that we would have room to look at these alternatives going forward before making the final decision?
Absolutely, council's discretion.
All right. I have no further questions.
Councilmember Sadley?
Yes. So you had mentioned that there were 9,000 short based off of the study of affordable housing units. I know that we have actually looked at other options for affordable housing units since our retreat in 2021. Lisa Craig actually presented that in a couple of different meetings for us, where they talked about looking at properties around food and shelter even. But the cost to rehab those were so extensive that it wasn't going to be of value for the city to purchase those individual units. Is that correct?
I'm going to have to look back to the back of the room. Ms. Craig? Thank you, Lisa.
Happy birthday.
I'm sorry. I missed the question.
Happy birthday, first of all. And secondly, I was mentioning, because Councilmember Tortorello had asked if we had done any previous studies on any additional affordable housing options in the past. And I think that was a little bit misleading with city manager because, no, we haven't looked at any single-room occupancy options because there really haven't been many available. But we have looked at affordable housing options since 2021.
Yeah, we are constantly. Actually, yesterday, we had a very long meeting with Oklahoma Housing Finance Agency, talking about potential tax credit projects for parcels of land that may be available. And so we're always trying to, you know, drum up business.
Right. And specifically with this ARPA money, I recall you giving a presentation about some homes that we had looked at around food and shelter, where we were looking at purchasing those with that money, but the cost to rehab them was going to be extensive so that they would come in to qualify for Section 8 or Norman Housing Authority standards. Is that correct?
True. The manager had us look at, I guess, just the west side of Reed across food and shelter. I believe there were 10 properties, five owner-owned, five renter. And because these are federal funds, the Uniform Relocation Act does kick in to where it's more than just the purchase of the property. If it's a rental property, there is an ongoing obligation for continued rent to bring the properties that were identified up to minimum standards to be used for housing after the purchase would be quite expensive also.
Okay. And so from your knowledge, this is the first SRO-style occupancy that we've seen as a city that we were able to purchase. And we hope that it's one of many because 40 units is definitely not enough when we have 9,000 short. And maybe you can speak on this. I know for affordable housing types, just kind of doing outreach, it seems like a lot of families tend to get housed quicker than single individuals. Is that true?
There's a larger inventory available of two- and three-bedroom units, one-bedroom units, and obviously studios are almost as expensive to construct as a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom because a lot of the cost goes into the kitchen and the bathroom.
Right.
And so there is a shortage of one-bedroom units that are available for people that are seeking Section 8 assistance. And just in general, that's not already targeted to the student market.
And those Section 8 vouchers that single individuals have, do they have a limit or a requirement of how many bedrooms they're allowed to have?
It's based on their family size or if they have a disabling condition needing a reasonable accommodation.
Okay. So if I were a single individual and I needed assistance, I would only be allowed to rent either an efficiency or a one-bedroom type unit, correct? How many of those type of units do we currently have in Norman that are available?
Oh, heck, I don't know.
I mean, that I could take my voucher out right now and get. How many do we have?
Very few that would accept Section 8. You know, since the first of the year, there's been almost 200 vouchers issued, various bedroom types, the majority being one-bedroom. And almost 50% of those have been returned because they have not been able to lease up in the 60s.
Did you say 5-0, 50?
50%. I think it's 49-point-some-odd percent.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Ms. Walker, if you would, could you please backtrack to a couple of slides? I just want to look at the ones where you were talking about the cost that could be incurred by the city?
I'm looking at Bryce.
Thank you, Lisa.
Yeah, the other items to be considered. Thank you very much, Lisa. I appreciate you. So on here, you put the cost of utilities. And that's something that's typically paid by the tenant. I know that typically, like, when we do own buildings, we do pay those. But this is a different type of situation where, yes, we're purchasing it, but actually, part of a residency, when you live in a place, you typically pay utilities. So it's my understanding that the residents will pay the utilities. Is that correct?
We believe that would be a component of their rent.
Okay.
So they wouldn't be individually metered, but we would collect enough in each of the rents for the 41 units to cover the bill for the entire facility.
Okay. And then, cost of insurance. Is that typically something that we would pay because we're the owner of the building? Or is that something that the occupier would pay? Because if I'm not mistaken, when we were operating the building for the warming shelter, were we not the ones that were responsible for paying for the insurance or something like that? And we ended up having to leave because we didn't have the right insurance?
I don't believe we were responsible for the insurance, but it's often built into rent. So it may have been the situation on the warming shelter. On all of our facilities that we own, we typically add those facilities to our general property insurance policy that covers all of them.
So we are self-insured in that respect. We may have a large deductible and pay for a level of insurance if major damage were to occur. But for minor issues, a re-roof or, you know, hail damage, we would typically write the check for that out of our risk management fund.
If there were a major damage or something that occurred in the facility by the residents, is that something that the operator would then be expected to cover the cost of that since they would be holding the lease for that building?
It depends on how you structure the lease, but certainly, we would want our own property insurance to protect the city.
But they would, we would most likely build something in that's saying, "Hey, if your people in here damage this, you're going to have to pay for the new door or the toilet that were..."
And out of that $356,000 projected revenue is most likely where that actual insurance premium payment would come from.
Okay. And the cost of regular maintenance activities, is that just like, what would that be?
Replacing filters in the HVAC system, gaskets for plumbing repair to stop leaks, dealing with roof leaks that may occur over time.
So just preventative maintenance type things?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then, funding of a reserve replacement account for future capital expenses. What do you see as future capital expenses?
Right now, the facility has, I believe, 16 large dual-pack units on the roof for heating and cooling. And they probably have a useful life of between 15 and 20 years. So to be able to set aside a portion of that $356,000 annually in anticipation that, over time, each one of those units would need to be replaced, and the roof may have a, you know, after we inspect it, we'll know what kind of remaining useful life we have left in the existing roof so we could build a replacement schedule and begin to set aside money to make sure we are able to keep up with that schedule.
So just things that a typical builder-owner would do to maintain an asset that they have, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's really all that I have.
Councilmember Lamb?
A little question on the numbers, on the math, because it seems like it's a little fuzzy. So we have the purchase price of the building for how much?
$2.45 million.
Okay. And then we have the estimate for up to $5 million?
Three to five.
To renovate this?
Correct.
And you're telling me we're going to cap it out at what we allot?
Correct.
And why don't we do that on other contracts?
Well, a couple of reasons. We have a lot of citizens' advisory input into those contracts as we're finalizing the final construction draft. final construction drawings. We usually start out with a budget, and then through the citizen engagement process, we recognize the desires of the community tend to grow, and they look at opportunities to make our projects bigger than maybe initially envisioned. We experienced, you know, the, the ebb and flow, or the growing and shrinking of communities' desires as it relates to the Senior Wellness Project and even the Young Family Athletic Center. What we wanted, what we could afford, and then what we could value engineer into the construction drawings of the project. At one point, for example, the Young Family Athletic Center, they talked about as many as 12 basketball courts and the inclusion of a 50-meter, an Olympic-sized swimming pool. And through the value engineering process, we pared it back down to eight courts and eliminated the 50-meter pool, so we have a 25-meter pool and a 25-yard warm-up pool. But that's kind of what that value engineering process looks like at the end of the day, so.
Would you say it's common or not common that things come back for council approval for more money on their contracts?
Common.
But you think that this is, we're just gonna cap this, even if they say, hey, we're into this, it's gonna take four more million after we're already 3 million in?
Well, our goal would be, at the time, we've verified there is no asbestos, we don't have a lead-based paint concern, it, it'll boil down to a couple of primary trades that will make up the lion's share of the investment in the rehabilitation of the facility. And one of those would be the plumbing side, just to make sure we have adequate restroom facilities, adequate shower facilities, and adequate laundry facilities inside. That's where the bulk of the investment would be. In going over what the architect's original estimates included, it included things like changing out the existing doors that are a 42-inch wide door and replacing it with a 36-inch wide door, which would be more usual and customary in a residential setting. But the doors that are in the facility now are rock solid, they're just larger than normal. That would be a thing we'd say, we can live with the larger door, it would just be tool to have individual keys per unit. So there's, there's a lot of gingerbread built into the estimate, you know, replacing wallpaper, replacing a lot of floor coverings, absolutely not necessary to be able to occupy the facility as a residential unit, but it would be nice if, you know, if the dollars allowed for it.
And I wanted the public to know, what is the amount that we're allocating for services?
We do have 1.9 million available in home ARPA funds. To what extent those would be allocated to this particular project, I think, depends on our application and then also council's decision on the contract with an operator.
Didn't in the presentation we received, didn't it say 1.9 million over 10 years for the services at this project?
I think it's actually over a longer period, 30 years. Is that correct?
10.
The home ARPA? 2030.
Tell 2030.
That's where I got my 30 from.
So, I mean, when you're doing the math, you add all that up, whether you take out the engineering, or, or the, do the value engineering or not, you're still over 8-something million dollars. So when we're looking at 6-something as this total price, that's not being honest with the folks, because we're putting in for the services too. And is that all taxpayer money?
Federal tax dollars.
So, is that a yes?
That would be a yes.
Okay, I'm just making sure that we're all on the same page on actual numbers that have been thrown around, because there are different ones out there. And if you look at it, and what we usually do as a city is like, hey, this is gonna cost more, come to council, get more money. And if the estimate's 5 million, that's where I got my numbers from that add up to 9.3 million dollars for this project, which comes out to 232,500 dollars per unit, or somewhere right in there. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Peacock?
Uh, yeah, just to clarify, if we were to acquire this property, we have the opportunity to rezone it, or actually, we would probably be forced to rezone it?
Yeah, we believe we would rezone it, and we've been talking internally about an SPUD option to provide some protections for both the use of the property and the behavior of the tenants.
And in that spud, we'd, we'd be able to list prohibited uses, indeed restrict, however we see fit?
Correct.
Okay, so I know there's a lot of concerns out there of this being transitioned to a homeless shelter at some point in the future. I think through that process, we could, okay, thank you.
Specifically address that.
Thank you, councilmembers. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers for this item?
Okay, the way that I'm, I'm adding it up, we've got 14 yeses, I believe, on this item, and eight noes. I'm gonna re-add it up, because we've got, we've, I've got 15 minutes on each side. So you all need to either figure out who's not gonna speak, or speak a little, and let your, each other speak. You just can't take too much time, because there's a lot of people that want to speak. So...
Madam Clerk, I'm gonna take a break, let them figure that out, we'll be back in, at 35 after. Please meet with us, and you can figure that out.
Yes?
Are you gonna alter?
Ladies and gentlemen, will you start going towards your seats, please? Ladies and gentlemen, will you take your seats, please? We're going to sit down and start again. There we go. You got it. Madam Clerk, will you call the first speaker, please?
This will be Cynthia Rogers, first.
Am I on? Okay. Good evening. Cindy Rogers, Ward Four. We've heard a lot of emotional and fear-based arguments against this project and a lot of what-about-ism statements. What does the evidence suggest? I'm a researcher. It's my thing. My statements tonight are drawn from a study by three scholars at Weber State University. The project, the paper is conveniently named, "The Impacts of Affordable Housing: A Literature Review." This is a 2021 study. I'll provide it to all of you. Housing instability can contribute to a large number of problems for individuals, such as worsened physical and mental health, developmental delays in children, and homelessness. There's a lot of scholars listed here. Affordable housing is a solution to this instability. The fear of negative impacts on neighborhood projects is understandable, but unfounded in rigorous empirical studies of real-world places with real-world data. Most studies show that affordable housing has either no effect or positive effects on property values and crime rates, though these can vary by neighborhood. These results are consistent for public housing and housing voucher programs. But what about projects in low-poverty or moderate-poverty areas? All but one of these studies found no effect on property values. Only one found a small decrease. Improvements in properties, architecture, and increases in income diversity can contribute to increased property values. Effect on crime in low-poverty and moderate-poverty areas? That's what we're worried about, right? There aren't a lot of studies on this, because these things don't usually go in these sorts of neighborhoods, but the studies that are there, and two important ones, found no significant effects. Providing stable housing for those in these can drastically improve their social outcomes. Several studies revealed that voucher subsidies have reduced the number of families on welfare, reduced a family's likelihood of returning to a homeless shelter, reduced rates of domestic violence, and more. Housing vouchers programs work, but only if there are available units which accept vouchers. We have a rare opportunity to address the gaping hole in affordable housing in our community. Providing affordable housing is an investment in our people and our community, and I urge you to vote yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Stephen Gould is a no. That's correct. Are you here?
He's not here.
Okay. John Scamhorn?
Well, thank you. I am Dr. John Scammyhorn. I have lived in Ward One for 41 years. Others are going to speak to the details of the arguments against this being a good idea, and so I won't take more time than say, "I recommend voting no on this."
Thank you, sir.
Stephen Ellis?
You didn't reset yet.
Yeah, I do.
So I want to make it clear tonight that this is not a homeless shelter that we're talking about, although I'm in favor of that, too, because we desperately need one. It's an affordable housing apartment complex analogous to the rent-by-room, four-bed, four-bath places that are close to OU. It's actually better than that, because each of these units will have a kitchenette. Now, there's no reason to fear the residents of this facility. Poor people aren't inherently bad or anything like that. The Norman Housing Authority has promised to keep a close watch on this facility, and I think they have a good track record for doing that, so we shouldn't worry about the neighbors. The cost here tonight is actually solid rather than fuzzy. You capped it at $6.4 million. You're not authorizing any more than that tonight in this item, so you shouldn't be worried about your future selves screwing this up. The facility is actually pretty cheap. $62 per square foot at purchase price, which is a lot lower than the value of the per-square-foot of comparable facilities, which is to say the rent-by-room SRO-style facilities I just mentioned. So it's like $145 per square foot at the Millennium Apartments, which have shared kitchens, and it's $125 for a motel that's actually for sale on the west side of town, which doesn't even have kitchens. Even if you add the renovation costs, however, which you shouldn't, for reasons I'll get to in a second, the per-square-foot cost is only $161 per square foot, which is less than the average cost of new housing or new condos in that zip code, which is actually $188. So this is actually pretty cheap. Why wouldn't you add the renovation cost? This is the thing that I think is actually really important here. Costs get capitalized into the value of the housing. This is an asset. You're creating an asset that's really useful, and even if the capitalization into the value of the facility isn't dollar-for-dollar, a true accounting of that cost actually makes the end-of-the-day cost of the whole project really, really cheap. So this is really a good money saver. It's a great idea. We need affordable housing. Forty doesn't make much dent in nine thousand, but we've got to start somewhere. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Dan Munson?
Hi. I'm Dan Munson from Ward Six. So as I understand this proposal, it includes 28 studio units at 195 square feet each, and 13 one-bedroom units at 392 square feet. If you do the total math on that square footage, it's 10,556 square feet. That leaves 29,109 square feet for use for office space, for meeting space, for reception area. To me, those numbers should be flipped. Why wouldn't we be allocating 72% of our space towards housing units and 28% towards office space? It seems like this is completely upside down. I've had the good luck to do a number of projects with the Army Corps of Engineers as a government employee, as a Department of Defense contractor, and as a manufacturer for 30 years. And what I've learned is that the Army Corps of Engineers has a life cycle on a building, and it's typically 35 to 40 years. And what the Army Corps of Engineers has learned over centuries of engineering and building facilities throughout the country is that when the building gets to the end of its useful life, it's better to take a dozer to it and build something new. So what I identified earlier here is that there is a demand for 10,500 square feet of space. Why couldn't we build a 20,000-square-foot low-income housing, brand-new? Why couldn't we explore doing that? I believe that this facility is going to be a total money pit, and so out of respect to the other speakers, I'll yield my time.
Catherine Taylor, sorry.
My name is Catherine Taylor, and I live in Ward Eight, where my husband and I have rented the same house for almost 20 years. Our backyard is adjacent to the property on West Robinson, being considered for affordable housing. I am speaking today in support of turning this property into affordable apartments, because I understand that Norman desperately needs this. I understand without truly affordable housing, Norman's unhoused population will continue to grow. We have a choice: to help people on the verge of homelessness stay in housing, or to push them out into the streets. It seems like a compassionate, no-brainer choice is to help people stay housed. Unfortunately, certain council members and community members are spreading a false narrative and using fear tactics. I am not afraid of this being a homeless shelter. It's not. Tenants will have to be approved, sign leases, and pay rent. This is not a place for people to stay a night or two. This is long-term affordable apartments. I am not worried about an increase in crime. If tenants commit crimes, they will be breaking their leases and can be evicted. Just like if one of the many renters in my neighborhood commits crimes, they, too, can be evicted. If you listen to the rhetoric surrounding the potential project, one might think that tenants will be allowed to do drugs on the front lawn while committing crimes throughout my entire neighborhood. I am no more worried about people living in these apartments committing crimes than I am about any of my other neighbors. I would be more concerned if a fast-food joint, convenience store, or any other retail store were to go in this space. Retail spaces come with noise, litter, and added traffic. Apartments, not so much, because there's oversight and approval. Tenants will be expected to follow rules or be evicted. I know certain council members and their followers think if we stop providing housing, food, and compassion to the unhoused, that they will just magically disappear. This is simply not true. My family took a long road trip this summer. We visited big cities like Denver and Salt Lake City. We also stayed in smaller towns like Laramie, Wyoming, Idaho Falls, Idaho, and Durango, Colorado. Every city we visited, big, small, or in-between, had one thing in common. They had people suffering in the streets, people looking for their next meal and a place to sleep for the night. This is a nationwide problem that will not go away by ignoring it. We have the chance to be proactive and keep people in housing instead of pushing them onto the street, and I urge every council member to do the compassionate thing and vote yes.
I would ask the audience to please refrain from adding to. Somebody's talking. Thank you.
Gary Barxdale?
Please, before I get started, I do want to mention that you started the timer for John Scammyhorn whenever he was called up here, and so he had lost at least 32 seconds, according to this clock up here. So I would ask that you please respect the fact that it took him that long to get up here, please.
I didn't start it.
Yeah, it was going. Yeah, it was. So, hello, Mayor, esteemed councilmen and councilwomen and councilpersons. Thank you for taking your oath of office seriously and upholding the Constitution. For those of you that don't, I suggest that you do. I plead for a no vote on this, for it seems that the decision to allocate this much money on this location without a definitive plan is a mistake. According to the words of our city manager, they have not considered other locations. I know that every single person on this council got an email concerning the Hampton Inn's availability, right? And I know that at least two of you responded to that email from a friend of mine who's a Realtor. There's that location. There's also the hospital. That belongs to us already, okay? I would like to read from the slides presented on the 16th City Council Study Session, real quick, that city attorney Catherine had mentioned a moment ago, that we keep talking about this not being homeless, but why on earth does it continue to mention homelessness repetitively in each of these slides? It also mentions that it provides tenant households with a lease identical to non-supportive housing with no limits on length of tenancy. No limits on length of tenancy. Those are in the slides that were provided by the study session. It also says that it proactively engages members of the tenant household in a flexible and comprehensive way of supportive services. I love that. That's great. We need to provide that. However, it goes on and says, "without requiring participation in these services as a condition of ongoing tenancy." I need to repeat that. "Without requiring participation in services as a condition of ongoing tenancy." If you're not going to require these people to undergo services that got them there, then you don't care about elevating them from that place. You don't care, all right? Many presenters here in the last meeting talked quite a bit about homelessness, and clearly, this right here is a lie. The information that was... Mayor, are we going to allow this?
No. Keep your comments down, please.
Can I start my time back over from the time that they interrupted me? So the interruption is their time, not mine. Christ was channeled in the last meeting as several presenters read from the Beatitudes, all right? It was kind of a joke. Christ commissioned us, not Caesar, to fulfill these needs for the poor. Us, not Caesar. Your own homes, if you're not willing to open up your beds, your bedrooms, and your backyards to these people, then you have no business imposing it upon others. Christ also had some harsh words for hypocrites. Now, back to these slides. It also says voluntary case management, yet there is no requirement for them to seek services. None. Let me repeat...
Lauren Vanderburg, are you here? Okay. How about Alex? I'm sorry.
Hi there. I'm Alex Nantier from Ward Two. I just wanted to express my support for the property at 1210 West Robinson. It's been sitting vacant for years, and I think this is a great way to make use of it. It's right next to a bus stop. It's near the homeland. It's near all the University of North Park stuff, so it'd be good for people that might not have cars. Affordable housing has been a huge problem in Norman, and the pandemic has exacerbated this by pushing the working poor and housing-insecure citizens into more dire housing and economic situations. I'm sorry. By approving it, this will allow folks in those situations somewhere to live and get back on their feet. I personally know a handful of folks who have qualified for Section 8 vouchers who literally cannot find housing in Norman. Private landlords just aren't offering these units, so it's time the city step in and help out with these services. Yeah. In closing, I just want to say that this is a great project, great use of ARPA funds, and I think it's the right thing to do. I urge you all to vote yes. Thank you.
Is it Dama Miller? Okay, Dana, sorry.
Dana Miller, and I live in Ward Three. I've lived there 33 years. And something I'd like to share about this particular building, I don't know if any of you have been unfortunate or fortunate enough to have a family member in this building for any length of time. I worked there intermittently for 17 years. It was very rare to go to this building to work that we didn't either, A, have sewage backing up on one of the halls where I have to move patients, or B, they had the floor torn up because I were fixing the sewage. The next month, it was repeated again and again and again and again. This building has sewage problems that have not been resolved in over 20 years. I think you're looking at a money pit. I think your money could be better spent on maybe a facility that's existing that doesn't have known problems, because with the backup sewage comes mold. It comes damage to the wallboard, damage to the woodwork. I just ask you to reconsider, and I'm just wondering if it wouldn't be more efficient to build a new facility, and also consider not just the single people. There are mothers with children that need housing as well. So let's consider all of Norman. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Caleb Creed?
Hi, council. Someone on council on Facebook said that the reason they oppose this, one of the people in the opposition said that because it would be importing poverty. They said it would be importing poverty, and what we need is people who can, so we need people who can create wealth. So this would be importing poverty, but we need to have people here who can create wealth. So decode that. What that means is we don't need poor people. We need rich people. That's what that means, right? We need owners, people who are going to own businesses, create businesses, not people who are going to be in poverty. So that's the actual motivation right here. It's like the city council members from the two richest wards oppose this. That's not an accident, right? That's because they're in favor of bringing rich people into town, bringing owners into town, getting money for their rich developer friends, getting money for their rich landlord friends, getting money for their rich business owner friends, not so much people going through poverty, people trying to stabilize their life after a bout with homelessness. That's the interest here. Everything else is a facade. So I 100% understand what's going on here, because I listen to what you say. I always am reading your comments. I don't engage, because I think you're dishonest. And whenever we say that the council isn't transparent and people don't trust the council, I don't trust some members of the council. That's because they repeatedly lie, and they use their position to help people who already have power and already have privilege, and they have completely sold their soul to those people. What I quoted the other day was Matthew 24, not the Beatitudes, and if you look at that, he addresses the nations of the world, and he says that those who do not help the needy, do not help the poor, and do not help the immiserated, that hell is reserved for them, and the righteous will go otherwise. So, and that was addressed to the nations of the world, and it's not in the Beatitudes.
Okay. Mark Wagner?
Good evening. I'm Mark Wagner from Ward Five. I'll try and be brief. With all due respect to the work that council has done and staff has done at the study session last summer, to be honest with you, I don't feel like I'm a complete hermit about city business, but last week was the first time I heard about this project. And so I wonder if many people in the city of Norman, if the low-cost housing is the number-one priority that they have for ARPA funds. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't, but it seems like we're dumping all of our ARPA fund basket into the one project of Section 8 housing. Maybe some of it should be spent on infrastructure or some of the other alternatives. And I believe we should get more input from the general public before we go any further. So I urge council to vote no tonight, so we can step back and take another look at this before we buy a 54-year-old building that's obviously going to need some work, and especially since it's been sitting vacant for as long as it has. Thank you.
Jake Allen?
I'll be brief, because I want to yield my time to people who have more to say, but I just want to say that I do really appreciate the work that went into this and all the research that has been done, and I think it is telling when all the detraction and all the opposition is kind of just coming from just flippant thoughts of like, oh, well, what if we did this? What if we did this? There's been a lot of work, and people have thought about all of the options for a long time. So I appreciate... time, so I appreciate the people that have done that work. Thank you.
Kevin Tobar.
Hello. My name is Kevin Tobar. I'm a part of Ward Eight, and I really do appreciate the Council members in order to appreciate, use more slides discussing this proposition earlier. I feel like it does give a more concrete understanding over how much has been used for each part of this property. But I, just to be brief, I just want to say that I support a yes vote for this proposition for a few main reasons. One, obviously rent costs have come up, and these funds are specifically used to help with those who are impoverished and those who need affordable housing. Why not use these funds for affordable housing? Of course, a 9,000 demand for affordable housing is a lot of numbers, and of course, 40 is just making a small dent, but it starts somewhere. It's an existing building that just needs renovations, and in order to start addressing these, we need to do something with this money, or else the government takes it back. This is money already allocated to help with this, so we need to do something with this money. Secondly, the government is used to help represent the people that it is being governed. That's why government is there. So if these people are electing officials to help with affordable housing, it is our best interest to trust the government to do what they have to do. At the same time, we need to have all the facts in place, and I feel like as more cities come out, this will definitely become a very flourishing proposition. Because of such a denseness that it is, it'll yield more profits because of it's so dense. And this, because people, because there's a lot of talk about this helping homeless people, it's because it is. It's helping those people who are impoverished, it's helping those people who need help directly, and it's also helping contribute to them to help come back to society in a more suitable and socialized manner. I see the rest of my time, and I just want to say that I urge you to vote yes on this proposition. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Last speaker, Michael Blunt.
Just in time. Thank you. Just got off work, so. Just listened on the way over. I love the livestream, by the way, wherever our tech guy is. Really appreciate it. Okay. I'm speaking tonight in favor of this proposition, as I said last, well, two weeks ago. This is what we need in this town. This is a step forward towards building that village it takes to take care of our children and our families here in Norman. This is something, yes, there will be renovation costs, there's always renovation costs, but honestly, we're getting a building at a stealable price. And beyond that, just the fact that this is an ongoing need, right? We don't have lots of affordable housing in town. Everyone says, "Why can't we just build a new building?" Well, I'll tell you why you just can't build a new building, because anywhere you try to put it, someone's going to come out in droves and say, "Well, you can't put it next to me." Because you try to build a new building, I don't want those people anywhere near me, right? We're going to hear the same comments, the same arguments of, "Well, I don't want the poor near me," or, "Well, these people just want to handout," or, "If we try to build affordable housing, it's going to bring down the value of our town." Well, I can tell you right now, number one, that's ridiculous, because every person in this town adds to the value of our town. Every person in this town adds to the value of our community.
Even conservatives?
Even conservatives.
Bullshit.
Hey. God loves them all. So, point is, for me, this is important for everyone in this community, because regardless of people's personal opinions or ideologies, every single one of us, even those who have a cushion, cushions disappear, every single one of us is only a few bad paychecks away or a few bad months away from needing access to affordable housing. And let's be clear when we talk about this. We're talking about, you know, Section 8 housing. Section 8 housing isn't low-barrier shelters. We're talking about people going through lots of hoops. All the red tape, the very same red tape that a lot of us bemoan every day because we can't stand having to deal with bureaucracy just to get, you know, our driver's licenses. These people have gone through everything imaginable to get to this point, right? We're not talking about, you know, and trust me, I would love to have low-barrier housing. I would love to have low-barrier shelters. I understand, though, that sometimes we have to start where we can. This is that starting place. This is a fantastic opportunity. So, again, if you want to help build that community, if you want to provide something that people need, this is it. And I will say, from a professional standpoint, I would love to have more resources I can refer to my clients, because I have families I work with every day. And if someone were to get on the edge of homelessness, I'd love to actually be able to give them an answer. So, thank you. Y'all have a great night.
Thank you, sir. All right. Are there any final comments from Council?
It's clear to see that our community is divided on this, and that's why, we've talked about that trust in Council. Some might not trust me, some might not trust some of the other members, and that's okay. I'd like to bring that back, and it's a little difficult when we're doing this, and we're... This just seems like so much money, bang for the buck, we're not getting it. I would like to read this email that I got from Dwayne Garrison, that is a way better financial opportunity. Dear Norman City Council members, a much better SRO, single-room occupancy option than buying and remodeling the nursing home on Robinson Street, the Hampton Inn is for sale. It resides at 309 Norman Center Court, Norman, Oklahoma. That's just south of the mall on Ed Noble. Advantage is over purchasing the nursing home on Robinson Street. Right now, the sale price is $3.75 million. That could be negotiated, who knows? Which is much cheaper than buying and remodeling the nursing home. I'm guessing that this place is ready to go. I don't know that. I'm just assuming. The City Council could start the RFP process immediately and begin operation much sooner than the minimum of 16 months needed to retrofit the nursing home. It has 61 SRO rooms currently with a communal kitchen and offices for staff and others. This is 35% more rooms than the proposed nursing home on Robinson Street, which would have 45. It's only 0.6 miles away from West Side Walmart and all the grocery stores. The Robinson Street nursing home's nearest full grocery store is Homeland, and 1.2 miles away. It is very near a current Norman bus route. It is right across the street from the West Side Public Library. It is less than one mile from over 50 businesses that could be used for employment without requiring a vehicle or to spend their access money over their 30% required for their SRO housing to stimulate the economy in those nearby businesses. It's not near any current residential area. So that solves a problem right there, when it's not in my backyard, it's not by any housing, it's by businesses. It's kind of tucked back there by itself, where the problems, if there were problems, it'd be much, much less negligible. If we're going to do something like this, why are we not doing smart things with our money? That's $3.75 million. I don't know the condition of this. It might be move-in-ready immediately. It might need some work. I don't know. I'm not into the business of buying hotels for SRO properties, but just at the cost of this building alone is basically less than the cost of just the reconstruction or the remodeling of the other one.
Point of order. We're not, this is off-topic, and we don't know any information about this hotel.
This is my time to speak. I'm speaking on options.
He's offering a different opportunity. It's equal time to talking about this, either or, any other he's debating.
Thank you. I'll continue. So, with this, we have many options. There's so many questions left on this. The taxpayer money going to this, where it's located, by schools, in a neighborhood. It may be rezoned, it may not. If it's not rezoned, then the neighbors don't have a chance to protest it, saying, "We don't want this here." If it is rezoned, they might have that opportunity. There's just so much going into this that it's going to cause a division amongst our citizens. We don't have a Council member here tonight that needs to be here for these discussions to put this on here. Whatever her position is, she needs to be here for this vote. If we're going to do something like this, my thought is that we send this back to the voters. And then, hey, I'll throw it down for, I'll throw the budget down for 20 million. You want the city to use 20 million on affordable housing? You want to use 10 million on affordable housing? Let's let the people decide. And then, let's let the cards, you know, play where they lay. So, this is such a rushed thing. We've talked about it, but this building coming up, and there's been a little bit of talking about it, and then we got more information about it than the first time that it was voted, when we went back to a study session and saw where the money was going. We didn't have much information on this. There is no clear plan on this. There's no, we haven't outlined what we'd want this facility to be or what the services should be. We'll get to that after we jump through all the hoops and acquire the property, do inspections and do remodeling. We'll get all the requests for proposals back on telling us what exactly this is going to be. And if we're not going to require people that are going to live here to go through these programs, what is the point of this? I totally agree with that. If your point of this is to get people off the street and get them back into productive living, why would you not make this facility be a requirement to go through these programs? We're creating additional government programs, and if the people living there are not even required to go through them, why even have the programs? Because who's going to go through that? If you're like, "Hey, I got a voucher, and I got a place to live," and whatever the voucher is, we don't know if that's going to cover their entire rent, if they're going to have to pay 30% of the rent on top of that, but if the voucher covers everything, then so be it. If that's the way that you choose to operate, just taking the voucher, and they're not having to go through any rehabilitation into, you know, productive society that is just throwing money down the drain. I just see that this becoming a blight on Norman, especially where it's at and how much money we're spending on it. Like I said, I would propose that this go to the voters, and everybody live with the decision of what the voters of Norman say, if we're going to get into this business, because we are competing with commercial industry here. And I don't know if there's state law that might be against competing against commercial industry. I'm sure that home builders, apartment builders should come up and say, "Hey, you're spending taxpayer money on this, you're cutting us out." Mayor, I usually ever take any time up here. On this one, seems pretty important. I'd like to use a little bit of my time. It's the only thing I'm going to talk on. So...
Please continue.
I look at a lot of people here. I'm sure y'all got different emails than me. The overwhelming majority of emails I got were absolutely opposing this, from all over the city, not just my ward, from all over. People living in that neighborhood also oppose it. We have so much stuff going on, and where this is at, you know, I'll just admit it. I don't know. When you have to tell us like, "Hey, we're going to do a good job of keeping the shopping carts out of there." Why are there going to be shopping carts there? Who's this meant for? And the thing, this is a total homeless initiative, and I get it. If we want to help people, let's help them, but let's do it for the right price tag, and let's do it where the citizens of Norman can maybe choke it down, even if they don't like it. They could probably live with it a little bit better if we said, "Hey, we're cutting this down from 9.3 million to 3.75 million or less." It might be, they might say, "Hey, okay, I can live with it. Maybe there is a need." But when you're pushing this forward with this amount of money, all you're going to do is rile this city up and have everybody ticked off at each other, so I just don't think it's a smart Council decision to push this through.
All right. So I'm going to start by just reading off the ways that we have appropriated money to date for our ARPA money. So just for clarification, we were awarded $22 million in ARPA money from the federal government. And in that process, when we were awarded that money, the first appropriation that we made as a Council was for $9.5 million to fill the gap in funding for our emergency operations center. Okay. So, almost half of our money is going towards public safety for this community, to put into our much-needed emergency operations center. So just know that there is a wide range of projects that this money is going towards. The second was $100,000 for the Norman Arts Council. We did $500,000 for COVID vaccine incentives. We did $3 million for lower Imhoff Creek stabilization, which was a stormwater project infrastructure. And we've done $1 million for business incubator programs, so an economic development driver for the city. The two remaining buckets that the City Council had discussed in appropriating money towards was affordable housing at approximately $6 million, so the 6.4 is what we have remaining, and then for nonprofit support at $2 million. So, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 different types of projects that we are spreading our $22 million in ARPA money around towards. So to categorize this as we're throwing all of our money from this type of funding into one project is simply not true. We've been having discussions about where our money would go for ARPA since last year. We've had conversations about it at multiple retreats. We've had multiple study sessions on where this money was going to go, how we were going to think that we were going to program this. We've had presentations by staff and continued discussion about this. So to say that we are jamming through this proposal, or this project in particular, is a little misleading. So I just want to clarify that as well. I think that, you know, in the comments, or in the presentation earlier, and the presentation that we got last week at the study session, helped address a lot of the concerns that we were hearing two weeks ago from residents. I understand that, you know, there was not great messaging or communication, but prior to that, and I think that we continue as a Council to expand and need to do those things to hear residents. And so I think the study session last week allowed an opportunity for a lot more information from staff. We had a presentation from the Norman Housing Authority, who also is conducting and running multiple facilities with Section 8 and affordable housing units. We got information about nonprofits that are also managing affordable housing units within the community, but as was stated before, we have 9,000 units that we are still needing within our community. And building this particular type, single-room occupancy and one-bedroom apartments, is not something that is, I guess, a moneymaker for developers. It's not a housing type that is available on the market. We were told that, you know, it costs just as much to build a one-bedroom as it does a two- and three-bedroom. And we currently, as Ms. Craig told us earlier, that we have more availability of those two-bedroom and three-bedroom units for the families, like mothers with children, available in this community right now. This SRO model, or this housing type, was addressed in our home-based analysis, our GAPS study that was done last year, and they've told us that we do not have enough of this particular housing type. Affordable housing is not just one type of model. So this project would address this particular one. That doesn't mean that we are covering the whole spectrum of what we need for affordable housing in this community. It will continue. We still will need to address continued concerns about this. Yes, we've been hearing about homelessness. It is an issue in our community, but also that we have to realize that providing places for people to land, what, there are people that are a paycheck away from becoming homeless, from losing their ability. There are Section 8 housing that has come offline because those units are no longer available. People are losing their homes- People are losing their homes that once were housed in Section 8, with Section 8 vouchers, who now cannot find homes and are on the street. To say that, you know, you have to force people to, you know, take services and yes, they will be provided, but you have to also understand that the rigor that people have to go through to find, to get the Section 8 voucher is more than anything else that you will find. They have to go through screening processes, background checks, you know, all of the different services. They match them with what their income is based on a sliding scale. That's how much the voucher will pay. You know, I think that we addressed last week that the rent, Section 8, those vouchers are tied to real federal dollars. So that is money coming in the door to pay things like utilities, upkeep, maintenance, all of those things that the city manager was talking about, how we're going to fund this facility into the future. At this point, I mean, we've talked through so many different things. And I do, I do hear concerns. But I'm also hearing from residents of that neighborhood, we heard from one tonight, that they are in favor of having this in their backyard. So to say that nobody in the neighborhood wants this, that's also not true. So, and through a zoning process, there will be an ability to notify residents. They will have pre-development. There will be, they will come before planning. We are probably going to do something like an S P U D, which is a simple planned unit development, which you are essentially writing your own zoning. So we can say exactly what can and cannot be on this parcel, right? So it further allows us to give clarity, to go through the process and to re, to define. This is, this is a first step, right? We have to be able to enter into a contract today, tonight, or to allow the city to move forward with the investigative studies, to find out if there is asbestos, to, you know, see if there are problems with the sewer. Those are things that we need to know, and I agree with you. But until we can tell our city manager and our city attorney that they can enter into that contract, we can't find any of that out. We are in a different position than a regular person as a municipal entity. So just want to kind of clarify some of those things. So I understand that that's confusing and that's, you know, understanding a process that is not normal. We operate in a very different way because we are a municipal government. So just, you know, feeling like there has been a lot of clarity brought to this process, what the building is, what this building is not. And I appreciate all of the outreach, the comments from the public. This is what city government should be about, is hearing the concerns of our residents, getting questions, going back, you know, having more discussion. And then ultimately, you know, us taking all of that feedback and making a decision to either move forward or not. So I appreciate you showing up and engaging in this process. And thank you for your continued engagement moving forward. Thank you.
Yes, so I appreciate you talking about the ARPA funds and what they've been used for. That was on my list. Just curious, has anything that we've spent with ARPA money or CARES Act money gone before the vote of the people? Do you know by chance, just since we've talked about what we spent ARPA monies on, what we've spent CARES Act money on? Do some of those reimbursement funds, the freed-up funds essentially from the general fund to do other activities?
Probably the largest single one was the small business grant program. Council actually awarded, I believe it was $3 million in total to small businesses that were struggling through the pandemic.
Did we do something for the senior wellness center with that?
I'm looking at anything, yes. I don't recall the amount.
Yeah.
I really am a life reader. 4.8 million.
4.8, okay.
Senior wellness.
And just, just as a, to get this on record, last time we had talked about, I had asked what the cost of the senior center was. And I think we had said 25 million and that's wrong. We were referring to the Great Young Center there, where the senior center was 12.5. So I want to apologize because I did have some concerned people reach out. So I just want to put that on record. As for, so none of that has been voted on by the people. Those are just things that have been presented before council with ARPA money, with CARES Act money that we've pushed through on initiatives that we've discussed based off of citizen input at retreats and things like that.
Correct.
Okay. So about the competing with commercial buildings, how long is this building set vacant?
At least five years.
So if another commercial business wanted to use it, they probably would have had ample opportunity to do so at this point?
I think it was in escrow. I'm aware of, I think, three times it had been in escrow and never brought to fruition.
Okay. And then, wasn't this building rehabbed by Norman Regional Hospital?
They were a part owner, I believe, at the time that last remodel took place in 2005.
Do we know if there was any plumbing issues addressed during that time?
We walked the site with the gentleman identified to us as the caretaker. He was employed at the time of the remodel. And he didn't indicate any plumbing issues that were addressed. So not aware of any.
I can say for sure, because I have been in Four Seasons Nursing Home. When it was Four Seasons Nursing Home, I volunteered there. And there were issues, just like any big building, there's issues. I can tell you another building that's in that same area is Westwood Apartment Complex. And they have major plumbing issues. So I don't know if it might be something underground in that area of town, because that is an older area of town. But I would assume that if there's any major plumbing issues, Norman Regional Hospital probably would have caught that. But furthermore, our inspectors will catch that or be able to tell that, correct?
Yes, we've got some experts in the field of plumbing, electrical, and HVAC that should counsel execute that contract. We would send our tradesmen over to inspect the facility and then bring in third-party inspectors for lead-based paint and asbestos inspection.
Okay. And then, just to kind of address the services not being a requirement, not everyone that's going to be in this facility may require some type of services that would be offered in this building, correct?
I would assume that to be correct. And we have Karen Canavan in the back. I would assume in just her experience through the Norman Housing Authority that there are many residents in Norman Housing Authority projects that do not require any services at all.
So fortunately, we are in a country that we can have freedoms not to be forced to do services that are not required of us when we live in a facility that we're actually going to pay to live in. So it's not like it's just a free-living center. This is like an apartment complex where they're paying rent. They're most likely going to end up getting jobs. Those who are disabled that can't go get jobs will be matched with other services and moved on out of that location. So this is not like a permanent stay facility. This is like transitional SRO, correct?
The component identified by the folks in our home-based report actually brought forth a proposal to council that the leases include a move-on clause that somewhere between 12 and 18 months, the ability to have that particular tenant move on to, you know, more permanent housing and free up these units for other people needing services provided on-site.
Great. And then, lastly, since we are going to be talking about Hampton, I think it's great that you guys have found this hotel that's now for sale. As we've said, we need 9,000 units. And this is just 40 that we're talking about on Wes Robinson. So once we look at, because we have talked to the city manager about looking at Hampton and possibly doing like a pre-inspection there and seeing what's going on, talking with the owners, that would be a great addition to add to what we already have. So instead of just having 40, we could possibly have 100 SRO units, which obviously we need since we're 9,000 units short. So I think that that would be a great opportunity to look at in the future as well, so we can add to it and make it 100. So thank you so much, Mr. Lynn, for bringing that up. And, well, I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Is it on? Can you hear me?
There we go.
Mic check, mic check. Drop the pen. Hey, so we've heard a lot tonight. And I've got emails that say, yes, we want this to happen, and emails that say, we don't want this to happen. And I know this is not a homeless shelter. The conversation is that, the conversation is affordable housing. So looking at the housing plan for 2020, there is no incentive that the city offers to build affordable housing. And I know that we need it. The city needs it. But right now, there are no incentives for builders and developers to build affordable housing. That's the truth. And so that's something that I think we ought to change as a city and a council to look at that and bring in incentives. Because I think, I think that in order for us to move forward, you know, we have to have options for those that can't afford to buy higher-end houses or are on the edge of losing what they've got. And with that in mind, I'm not going to talk about the hotel that was brought up tonight. That was a good point. And my colleagues here have brought up great points so far. Is that I always look at what we can do for the greater good, okay, with the money we have, okay? So if we're going to spend $6.4 million for 40 rooms, all right, that can only hold 40 people at one time, right? Am I right, Mrs. Creek? Right? Yes, is that a yes? I'm looking at other options like, why not take some city-owned property that we have, that I've looked at, and put a 1,300 square foot, three-bedroom mobile home on those properties? 40 of those homes would cost $3.64 million, excluding the cost of the developers to develop the land or just to make the streets and lay pipe and water and sewage. I think that would be a better deal going forward. City manager, you were asked earlier today, did we ever take votes before for any spending of ARPA money, correct?
Correct.
Just because we hadn't taken votes before doesn't mean we can't take a vote now, correct?
That's absolutely council's discretion.
So because we have no information that came up tonight, and we have been discussing this for a long time, I think we owe it to the citizens of Norman not to rush into this because new information just came about. And that new information is that there are other options that we did not explore. We did not look at mobile home properties or any city-owned property that we can acquire. And I think if we're going to do a hands-out versus a hands-up, I think it's kind of the same thing nowadays, that we build these trailers and use that instead. We can house more people. That's the goal. If the goal is to house more people with the same amount of money, then we should also look at exploring the opportunity and the possibility of these mobile homes. Now, you know, currently, we look at maybe 16 months, right, to get this facility up and running?
Correct.
That's the max. And there is a hard cap on renovation costs, correct?
That would be our instruction to bring back to council as part of the contract.
So if we do find asbestos, how much extra would that be on us to abate that and store it or find someone to store that for us?
It could easily cost a million dollars.
Okay. So that would be a deal cutter if there was asbestos. That would break our budget.
That would be our recommendation.
So there are other alternatives to look at. I don't think we have spent enough time to look at the alternatives. And at this point here, I'd like to make a motion because I think if we're going to spend this money and we still don't have and did not get a chance to look and discuss other alternatives, I want to make a motion to postpone this for a special election of the people. I think we had done this before, we had done this before for the homeless shelter. And just to reiterate and to clarify, this is not a homeless shelter. This is affordable housing. That if we're going to spend this much money on affordable housing, which I agree we need, there are a lot of questions that are unanswered, other opportunities that we need to look at to make the best use of this money, that we should postpone this. I make a motion for a postponement for a special election until we can let the voters decide how we can spend this money the best way. We have different options for this date. But at this time here, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make that motion to postpone for a special election and send this back to the voters. If you guys vote yes, then we'll go forward. And like I said, there are people here that just heard about this and they were in the dark. Now, I don't think that was on purpose. I don't think it was on purpose. I just think that it was poor communication. But then again, you've got people here who are just on the edge of losing what they got. And we're going to spend taxpayer money on something that they're not going to be a part of. Ward 5, 6, and 8, we have a turnpike coming through us. Why can't we spend that money on legal defense fund for those guys fighting OTA? SROs, you know, I got to talking to the superintendent. He would like to see an SRO in every school in Norman. That would also serve the greater good. But if we are to discuss this and go forward, I think the voters should have a say as to how we spend this money if it's going to be in affordable housing, okay? I think we need affordable housing. Personally, I don't think that we should be in the business of affordable housing. But as a city, we have the money to do it, okay? I just think that we need to be smart about it and look at all the options. And if the voters say yes, let's put some mobile homes out there. Let's buy this property on Robinson. Let's look at the hotel and purchase that too as well, then I'm for it. But right now, I've got too many people that say, no, we don't want this, as well as people that say, hey, this is a good idea. So I just think that we shouldn't rush through this right now. I think we should just, I mean, it's, the building has been empty for how many years now?
At least five.
Okay, it's not going to go anywhere, all right? It's still going to be there. I just think it's an opportunity for the voters to decide how this money is spent. And if it's mobile homes, if it's a mixture of mobile homes, I think we would have money left over to build a metal building to house the 40 individuals. And I'm going to be honest with you, the guys that are signing up to get these rooms, they're going to be dudes, okay? What about the single mother, the single dad with kids? Are they going to have the opportunity to go into these three-bedroom or the max of 392 rooms, it's 13 of those? Or how are they going to fit in one of the 28, 195 square-foot rooms? It's not for families. I think affordable housing should include the families, okay? It should include the single mothers, single parents. Heck, those guys in Ward 5 losing their homes. Biggest complaint other than the turnpike is where are they going to be living at if they lose their house? Because there's no places in Norman. So I think if we want to do a true affordable housing project, I think it should be a vote of the people. And let's be smart about this and build communities instead of one-offs, you know? Instead of 40 people in a room, how about 40 families on 10 acres with real houses, bedrooms, space to move about and grow? So, Mr. Mayor, that's my motion.
Councilmember, to clarify your motion, you're just talking about item number 22.
This would be item 22. And if we vote on this, would this affect 23 as well?
Is that a question?
Well, it was. So if we vote to postpone this for a special election, would this also affect 23 as well?
Yeah, as the, as item 23 is currently written, it is the appropriation for the purpose of the Robinson acquisition. So if council postpones 22, I would recommend we would also postpone 23 because to appropriate it, we would want to rework what that title says. And we don't need to appropriate it until council's ready to spend it.
Okay, I'm good with that. So, Mr. Mayor? So my motion is to postpone number 22 for a special election to be called for the purposes of allowing the voters to determine whether the proposed expenditure is appropriate.
Is there a second? I have a motion and a second. Let me finish writing. Let me finish writing. Special election. State again.
For a special election that can be called on for the purposes of allowing the voters to determine whether the proposed expenditure is appropriate.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor with a second. Postpone item number 22 for special election called for, called on for purpose of expenditure if it is appropriate. Councilmembers?
Wait.
Wait.
You'll have to have discussion.
Oh, true.
And comment. And public comment.
Okay. The motion on the floor?
Yes.
And councilmembers? You have a comment?
No, I have a point of interest. So we have a motion on the floor. We had a motion on the floor. So we are amending or changing the motion on the floor.
Do you want another second?
No, I'm asking.
Oh.
You had a motion to approve on the floor. And so this would be a motion to postpone, which would take precedence over the motion to approve.
Comments from councilmembers? Seeing none. Counsel, comments from citizens?
We'll try to get the mic working too, so.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Hannah Smith. I live in Ward one. I think it's real interesting that certain councilmembers have a sudden interest in affordable housing. And I think it's commendable. I look forward to voting on a bond measure to fund those ideas that they have. However, this affordable housing project is necessary and it needs to happen as soon as it can. We have been working on this process for a year and even longer. I think that Lisa Craig has been working on something like this for probably three years now. I would also like to say that it's real, real convenient that they think this is something that gets people stirred up. And if they can push it off a little bit longer, maybe it'll benefit their campaigns. So I would just encourage councilpeople to be as courageous as they can and get this through. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Lee Thompson, and I'm in Ward six. Elizabeth Foreman is my commissioner, and she's not here. This is a big deal. And I do sense, I don't, I don't come every meeting, but I do sense a rush. We're adults here, and I know people are in need. There's a room full that is representing that. And I, I'm a pastor, so I understand that. And I don't want to make light of their need. But we've got people in here saying that there's, there could be mold. There could be asbestos. There could be sewage problems. We've got one lady here that's worked in the building. We've got a big deal here. And I say, as just a wife and a mother and a pastor, that this is being rushed. So that's my, that's my say. Thank you.
Hello? This is hilarious. All right. Russell Rice, Ward two, thank you very much. Let me tell you a short story. It's not a short story, actually. I was trying to do it in three minutes. I've spent probably 200 hours trying to house a single unhoused individual. Me and my team have taken almost 200 human hours to house someone, all right? And when this is brought up, the way that it's being brought up and tossed around, I think it's great. Let's add the hotel to it. Let's add the trailer park. All three of them. That's great. Let's take that to the people. Let me remind you guys that the last time we voted on something, the only thing that almost passed was the homeless measure. It almost passed. It was the only thing that almost passed. So you guys remember that when it comes time to vote. Time to vote. Did y'all vote today?
Sir, stick to the topic, please.
Oh, to the topic, right. Man, I'm all twisted off on did you vote today? Let's see, how much longer do I have? Two minutes? All right, so it took me a week to find, a week to find a manager that would work with a Section 8 housing voucher. And then she wouldn't do it until I walked in. It took me almost two hours of talking with this lady and conversing and trying to talk her into it. These 40, these 40 rooms that we discuss are life-saving. It's not something that we want. It's not something to toss around. These are needed. These are life-saving devices. If we put humans in these things, what happens is the first thing they do is they seek services. They say, Russell, will you take me to COCMHC? Yes, yes, I'll take you to COCMHC. Let's set up that mental health appointment. Let's do that. All right, so then they ask me for cleaning supplies, all right? And pillows and blankets and the police to put their head that's not on the floor so we get them cots. But they're housed. We housed someone. Took us two, almost 200 hours. We're almost going to house a mother and a child. All right? When you guys toss this around, it hurts my feelings. Hurts my feelings. Man, does it hurt my feelings. Ah, hurts my feelings. You don't even do anything. Man, please vote yes on this. Please, please. Wait, not on this, sorry, not on this, on the other one. Vote no on this one. This is silly. Anyways, thank you very much. Y'all have a great day.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening again. Mark Wagner, Ward five. We just, we're talking about spending a large chunk of change here. And so if you spend the $6.5 million to get 40 beds or 40 rooms, 40 SROs, then that comes to $158,000 and change per room. And if you add the $3.75 million for the hotel to get those other 60 rooms, to get 100 rooms at $10.25 million would be 102,000 per room. We can certainly do better than spend, I mean, 158,000. We could, we could buy nicer homes for that, to put one family in or one person in. So again, the overall cost, we're not being very efficient. We're not being very good stewards of the money that we're getting. If we're going to spend $158,000 for a 40 rooms that are either 192 square feet, that's not even 10 by 20. My master bedroom of my little 1,300-square-foot house in Houston, that was the size of my master bedroom. And you're including a bathroom and a kitchenette? We can do better. We need to take a step back and look at this and see what our other options are. There are other, better, more efficient, cost-effective options. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jade. I'm one of Norman's many unhoused. After hearing myself and my friends talked about in third person all night, I'd like to weigh in on this, please. And also, I wish to say, I wanted to set the record straight on a few things. We're not all drug addicts. We're not all hobos. We're not all lazy asses. All right, Mr. Lynn, you owe some apology on that one, please. Thank you. Also, I have been unable to work for the last two, three years due to disability. I have a master's degree. I'm a hard-working individual. But I've had a disability that keeps me from being able to work, and I have not yet received, I'm still fighting for that. I lost my housing last year due to my Section 8 voucher not being able to be taken at Emerald Greens anymore. And I just looked at an apartment the other day that told me they'd just stopped taking Section 8. And being out here on the streets take a toll on our mental health. So I'd like to say, you know, any of y'all who wish to take longer on this crisis that we have, where people's lives are at stake, people's emotional and safety and well-being and psychological well-being, this is taking a toll on my mental health and on other people's as well. And let me say, I'm also three years in recovery from alcohol abuse and alcohol addiction. And I'm staying sober on the streets. I don't know how I'm doing it, but I'm doing it. But any of y'all who want to delay these proceedings? Anybody who wants to delay these proceedings because, I mean, what I'm hearing is, what we're voting on is not to purchase yet. We're voting on investigating to see if this is a good option or not. And now we have two other great options. Keep the options coming, please. But let's treat this as the crisis that it is, the priority that it needs to be because me and my other friends out here who are just struggling to get by, we don't always know where we'll be able to sleep the next night because police come along and say, oh, you can't stay here. It's illegal to be homeless. It's illegal to exist for some of us out here. So any of y'all who are trying to delay this process just because of whatever reason you want to, how about we switch places? How about you all can be homeless for the next three months, and we'll take your homes until you all figure out if this is a crisis or not? Thank you.
I have a question about what the cost would be to inspect the building and see if there's anything wrong with it versus...
The item?
Versus going into a special election because I think that we should know that before we make that decision.
The comments are related to the motion to postpone the question?
Yes, I'm speaking about that motion. We should know the cost versus continuing and looking at the building. You say, we can look at the building and we can turn back. Another thing I really wanted to reiterate is that the single-family units, I think we've stated several times that they were built because, or, you know, that we're asking that they be built because that's what's needed the most. So I, I don't know, I just, I feel like there's been a lot of dishonesty up here. And I commend those of you who were brave enough to speak the truth tonight.
Steve Ellis, Ward four. In reference to the amendment, I think that we're actually, it was justified by what I think some actually pretty poor cost accounting. And people who are worried about rushing into things, it seemed a little ironic to me because here we are rushing into two brand-new proposals based on cost accounting that actually doesn't even make a lot of sense, right? So you've got to remember that when we buy a building in Norman, we're actually buying an asset. And when we refurbish that building, we're at least in part capitalizing those costs. So we're getting a more valuable asset. And even if you don't get a sort of one-for-one for your refurbishing dollars, you've got the asset improving, which is decreasing the cost for the proposal. So almost all of the cost worries that have been proposed, which are really the foundation of the proposal, proposed amendment, are pretty spurious, actually, if you think about it. I do think it's important that we look forward. So what I really recommend that you do is vote no on this amendment, but assign both of these proposals. So the hotel purchase and the manufactured housing village to one of your committees to actually look at the cost and get the staff involved in this because I think they understand the accounting pretty well. So let's not jump into getting an election right now. I mean, we haven't even got a date for the election and the amendment. And we know that that's always a problem in Norman because of the way the state runs elections. So let's, let's pass this tonight as is. Let's reject the amendment, but take the good ideas from the amendment and put them through the procedure so we can get more affordable housing. We're 9,000 units down. We're going to need to do a lot of things. So let's start tonight. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Delina Gleason. I'm Ward five. And I want to thank all of you. And Rashar, I want to thank you for what you have brought up because, and what Kelly's brought up and what all of you have brought up. Because homelessness and affordable housing, this doesn't need to be a fight. We're not against anybody. We want people to thrive. That's our goal. We don't want to hand out. We want to help. We do. It's not about that. What this is about is a building that, why has it already had three other people turn it down? Why has it been there for five years? Well, maybe it's a building that has big problems. And we need to be good stewards of this money. Money is hard to come by. And so we need to be good stewards of this money. And to me, it's not being a good steward if we're paying this much money and these people that are going to occupy it are going to have very little square footage. And it's going to cost, I can't remember, but was it $235,000? That's absurd. And so to me, I'm for this amendment. I think it should go to the vote of the people. I would love that. We are not against people who want to work hard. We want to encourage that. And we want to give them independence. This is not what this is about. This is about spending a ridiculous amount of money for a building that could possibly be a money pit. And I think it needs to go and have further research. We have better ideas have been brought up so that we can house more people. And so anyway, I'm in favor of this, and I thank you for that. And I hope that it goes to the vote of the people. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, council. Joshua Clark, Ward three. We preface to my comments, I do apologize for my lack of decorum earlier in the meeting, on my outburst. I rise to speak in favor of the amendment on the floor. I think more information about this project definitely needs to be gathered. It's a building that has sat for five years. It's almost a 60-year-old building. As the one gentleman said about the lifespan of buildings, a 60-year-old building probably has a ton of problems associated with it. And contrary to the, the assertions or disparaging comments made by some members in the council chambers right now, not everyone who acts and feels and believes like I do and other conservatives are a bunch of cold-hearted people and don't care about our homeless people in our communities. We just feel like that, along with government and the private sector, is the best way to solve these issues, not just through government alone. So I do urge my, the council members to consider this amendment to the, allowing the people to have a better choice or to be able to act, elect or use their democratic process to, whether they want to approve this or not. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Emily Tucker, Ward four. I'm speaking in favor of, not of the amendment, but of the general thing. From what I understand, if there are problems... Sorry?
We're right now...
Yes, yes. And I think that this should be approved tonight. Because from what I understand, if there, if there are problems with the building, there is the asbestos study. Like, this is to vote on a pre-lease, if I'm correct, to inspect the building to see if there are problems. And then the council will come back and, and, and see if we want to keep it. And if there are problems, then we don't have to keep it. And that's why we have the study. This is what we're voting on tonight. So I just wanted to clarify that. It seems like some people are nodding their heads. And a bit of note on the private sector. The private sector, Section 8 is very complicated. And oftentimes, private landlords don't want to have to deal with this. It often, you know, is a little too complicated. And people need housing now. I think a statistic was mentioned earlier that 50% of housing vouchers are returned because of housing costs, the inability to use Section 8, how private, private sector landlords and apartment complexes sometimes take away Section 8. So the private sector is really not the best, the best path forward. And I think that pushing it off to an election will just, when this is, this is a proposal to study a building, and it's not like a finalized lease, I think that's quite silly. And yeah, I think that this, the amendment should be voted no. And the general proposal as is should be voted yes. Thank you.
Dana Miller, Ward three. And I agree with the majority on this side that we need to house as many people as possible as soon as possible. None of this is going to be immediate. The building's going to take a lot of time, repair, research, et cetera, et cetera. I think we should help the largest number of people, the least amount of time, for the best dollar value. And if that means taking the time to look at options, because this building won't be ready for what, a year, year and a half? If we can find a building that is feasible, functional, and decent to live in, why not go with that option for less money than to spend all this time checking and researching? Let's get people housed. Let's give them shelter. Let's give them a safe, clean place to call home.
Thank you, ma'am.
Let's step to the amendment, please. Thank you, ma'am.
I suggest we wait.
Eight before beauty, I guess, where we're going here. I'm Lynn Miller. I live in Ward 5. I have been where all of you are right now. And I think it is never a good idea to vote on something from the dais as important as a special election. Isn't that what the amendment was? It wasn't just postponing this so you can study it some more. That's not what the amendment was. It was about a special election. Now, personally, I think this is ARPA money. I think it's there. I think we do have a housing crisis. And we do need to do something about it. And there are some other great ideas here that should be explored. But I don't think voting on a special election that's come up from the dais, you can't just go out and say, oh, we're going to have a special election next week. There are all sorts of, I think Dr. Ellis pointed it out, there's all sorts of rules about the elections. So I would encourage you to go back to the original item number and vote on the item that first came up. And I would vote down, voting on a special election, the idea of which came up from the dais. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hey there, Rachel Wyatt Swanson, Ward 8, Green Belt Commissioner. And then also, I am the Chairwoman of Norman Caravans. So I just wanted to quickly restate what many of the people have said here, that there is a desperate need for affordable housing for people. This is not a homeless shelter. We will not be picking up or dropping off people there. This is for affordable housing that Norman desperately needs. Please don't delay. We must move forward tonight. Thank you.
Hi, Lauren Vanderburg, Ward 4. So when looking at this that we just proposed, I think the difference between the two options, whether or not to hold a special election or go ahead and proceed upon the previous item, has to do with time. And I feel like waiting for an election when we could simply go ahead and investigate this building and then have the potential to return if we're not satisfied with the results, I think that's a waste of time. While I, you know, love elections, while I think that they're all valid, I mean, I think this is what we have representatives for. And what, you know, we're here for tonight is to express our concern. And my concern is that time is flying by with every passing day. The more we put this off, why don't we just get started here? That's how I feel about this subject. Thank you.
Michael Blunk, Ward 2.
So on this amendment, we need to, we need to kill it dead in the water. This amendment's ridiculous. The idea of like going, as was said previously, going and having a special election put up here in the middle of our conversation about this particular project is a farce. I was here two years ago during a very contentious budget discussion. And I remember that things were done on the dais. And I remember we got sued because of it. In fact, I think we all remember, we lost that lawsuit because it didn't give the public time to weigh in on such a special issue, right? We somehow violated open records by not having something ahead of time we can discuss. By putting this idea of a special election in front of us tonight, last minute, in the middle of an ongoing conversation, we already had things on the floor, all that does is keep the rest of the public from this town from having any say on that special election. Further, when it comes to how the state does elections, I also remember that, as Dr. Ellis said, there are rules around those elections. I remember very clearly that, well, and while I definitely love Ms. Schuler, I deeply appreciate her service. Thank you, Lauren. I do remember that before Lauren got that seat, there were multiple elections for Ward 2. We were informed by the State Board of Elections that this town had had too many elections. So in fact, the ability to choose how many elections we have of any given year isn't even in our pockets. It's in the states. This is something that doesn't need to happen. It's ridiculous that it's being thrown out here. And it flies in the face of everything that many people in this council have raved about for the last two years. Don't you dare lie to me. I'm not a fool. I was here. Further, I was also here last year for the last time we had a contentious budget discussion. I love those, don't you? We're here for 10 hours at a time. We get to make friends. I remember that last contentious budget discussion. And in that budget discussion, we had these federal dollars that we allocated. Some of that money, specifically about $6 million or so, was allocated specifically for this purpose. That money isn't coming out of Norman's pockets. It's coming from the federal's pockets. And Uncle Sam has some very deep pockets. He's given us that money for this reason. God bless him. So let's do it. Further, one last thing on why we should shoot down this amendment and get back to our main discussion is because, as has been stated by other speakers tonight previous to me, is that what we're voting on in this first issue isn't just, you know, to automatically spend the money. It's to let our city staff, who are professionals, go forward. Let Mr. Pyle lead his staff board. Let Mr. Francisco do the finances. Let our folks go and check out whether or not this is a good investment, whether or not it goes teal and goes over if we find asbestos. If it turns out that it's not something we can do, then we don't have to keep the contract. But we can't move forward unless we vote on this issue. So vote down this ridiculous amendment in the middle of our discussion. Come on now. Thank you.
In regards to the building, my father was exposed to asbestos. He died of mesothelioma five months after his diagnosis. So you can't tell me that this building doesn't have it. It does. And you can't tell me, but I'm going to ask, has anybody already gone in and checked for those things before us? Surely they have for those people that were wanting to possibly, you know, buy the property. Have they done their own inspections? That's my question. Does anybody know? Okay, that's okay. So at least that's put in your mind, at least. So, yes, we need housing. Yes, we need to take care of our people. But like many have said, we need to do this in the best way possible that we can all come together and figure out the solution for. I support the amendment. I think it is important for those of us to have a say. This building can impact the lives of many people. Mesothelioma doesn't show up for 30-plus years or more. It hit us like a brick. We lost him five months after, whoo, sorry, after his diagnosis. So I would just like, again, to put forth that we need to find out if it's already been looked at before we spend the money to possibly do what somebody else has already done, what someone else has probably already said. Asbestos is still being processed today. So that's another thing that we're going to have to look into, is what supplies we're going to be using. So please take the time to find that answer before we even look into this building because that would be a waste of money to go and inspect something that's already been inspected.
Molly Jones, Ward 1. I've heard a lot of things being thrown around about who these people will be. These people will be people like me. I have worked since I was 15. I have done everything that you people have said to do that will make me successful. I am now disabled. I have worked every time. I have paid my taxes. This would help people like me. But there's somebody who's throwing around sex offenders like they aren't in every district, like they aren't in rich people's areas, too. They've pulled out that, oh, it won't help enough women. Or, oh, it won't help. It will only be men. Sorry. Anyway, I think that we should. This is something that can help too many people right now. There are a lot of people falling through the cracks. And it's too easy to other everyone else and to say they aren't working hard enough. Guess what? It's anecdotal. I have lupus. I don't have a whole lot of years. I'm never going to produce more for this society. I want to be able to afford my own apartment on what I make on disability, but is it impossible? So yes, I have to go and I have to take advantage of other things. Right now, the money's there. The building's there. Don't vote on a special election. Just vote it in.
Gary Barstow, Ward 8. I'm in favor of the amendment, and I greatly appreciate being given an opportunity to speak as a citizen. And the voices of the citizens of Norman are not able to speak here tonight. We've got 120,000 people in this town. And I think that to hold a special election would be ideal. I would hope to be able to get the wording of that special election fine-tuned because if I'm not mistaken, the amendment did not mention anything about an apartment complex, didn't mention anything about Norman Regional Hospital, and didn't mention anything about anything other than sending it back to the vote of the people to make sure the appropriation of this funding is acceptable to the people. Whenever it concerns affordable housing, I'm in favor of affordable housing. All right? I was a homeless person in this town for six months. By the grace of God and the program of Alcoholics Anonymous, I've been sober now for a number of years. And I'm grateful for the people that helped me to get to that point. Grateful. All right? We need to recognize that there are people in need, absolutely, absolutely. What are we doing? What are you doing? What am I doing? What are we doing? I'm not going to expect the government to take care of those situations. But I am going to ask that in the process of doing so, we don't overtake the opportunities of nonprofits and of private opportunities for people to share their goods and services to the less fortunate people. So I'm in favor of the amendment that states that we table this vote and leave it up to the people in Norman to make this election. And yes, I was here at that contentious budget discussion last year. And I'm sorry, I'm going to call a lie a lie. We were sued because we were making appropriations for funds in that meeting, not because we were having a call for a special meeting from the dais. That's why we were sued, because we were appropriating funds from the dais for that without a prior notice. That's why. So a lie is a lie and a truth is a truth. And the truth is that people need to have a voice on this and not just a select group of individuals that are trying to make a money pit into something that's supposed to help people. All right? We don't know. Electrical issues, it's sat vacant for five years. How do we know that the rats haven't eaten up the electrical boxes? So we don't only have possibility of plumbing issues, asbestos issues, electrical issues, city code issues. There's all kinds of issues that we've got to deal with with this. There's too much of a rush. If you want to get people housed quicker, then I think a year and a half is a little bit ridiculous. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Hello, Kevin Tobar, Ward 8. I just, you know, I just want to reiterate that, you know, these are funds made so that we can help create affordable housing. And using these funds to create affordable housing is the best way to create better affordable housing. You guys are our representatives. You are the select group of people that we voted for. Not two years ago, not one year ago, a few months ago. We elected some of you. We elected some of you to help represent us as the city of Norman. So in order to make a special amendment, to have another election, when we just voted you guys in to make these tough choices for us, I just don't get that. You guys are representatives. You represent us. So make that choice to investigate that property while you can. So I'm a no for this amendment, and I'm a yes for the proposition 22. Thank you.
Professor Cynthia Rogers, how about that? I'll put on my professor hat. Economist, urban economist, public finance economist. I won't tell you how many papers I publish, but okay. I would actually like to thank former Mayor Miller for her very earnest and appropriate comment that this amendment is not just to delay and study and look at other options. It's much more significant than that. And in fact, if you really wanted to kill this project, it's the perfect amendment because I think next year would be the soonest we could have a special election. And I've never seen us have a special election that didn't go through an extended process of whether we should, when it would be, what the wording would be. So this just sets up a whole bunch of hurdles to address a problem that we have an immediate need to address. So kudos for whomever brilliant idea that was. It sounds great. Now, let's also remember this is ARPA money. And the people most impacted by COVID are low-income workers. And so it is most appropriate to use those funds in a way that would help that demographic. So I am firmly against the idea of an amendment that would call for a special election. An amendment that would delay is a different story, much less significant. Thank you.
Steve Smith, Ward 4. Thanks for all of your input. I really, you guys have a very hard job. Thank you for doing it. Democracy is really messy. Getting the people involved is difficult sometimes. We've been working on this project for three years. We had an election today with nine propositions. Why wasn't this voted on today? I think we need to hear from the people, how they feel about this. You know, if we want the people of Norman to trust their city council, the city council has to ask the people of Norman how they feel about important issues like a $9 million, whatever, apartment, low-income housing. It needs to go before the people. There are 75 people in this room. I would say most of the 130,000 people in Norman aren't even aware of this project, have no idea what's about to happen. At least ask their opinion. I'm for the motion on the
Alex Lanfier, Ward 2. I'm for the hotel. I'm for the trailer park. Let's take care of the property at 12:10. Wes Robinson, first. Vote no on the amendment.
I've got to reword that. It's lousy, lousy, lousy. Yes, ma'am.
Whenever we do postpone them, aren't we required to set a date of when it's postponed to?
We typically do. I think the way this is worded, the date would be after a special election.
Called on for the purpose of expenditure if it is appropriate.
Yes.
Is that your amendment, Councilmember Tortorello?
Yes.
All right. Motion on the floor is to adopt that amendment. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
The motion fails by a vote of three to five, voting for Councilmember Tortorello, Councilmember Lynn, and Mayor Heikle.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Now it leaves us back to item 22. The motion on the floor is to approve the contract. Do you want me to read the whole thing again? No. Motion on the floor is to approve the contract. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
The motion passes by a vote of five to three, voting against Councilmember Heikle, Councilmember Lynn, and Councilmember Tortorello.
Thank you all. Item 23. A resolution appropriating $6,400,000 from the Special Grants Fund, ARPA, balance for the purchase, rehabilitation, and repurpose of 1210 West Robinson Street to provide expanded affordable housing in Norman. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution. I have a motion and second. Are there any additional public comments from the audience? Are there any?
There's a lot.
Okay. We've heard a lot of comment on this.
Councilmembers have expressed a need for a break.
I agree. Take a break for 10 minutes. That'd be half, after.
Their things aren't working. It usually, it usually will come right up here.
Little gray deal.
Yeah. And since their things weren't working.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
There's usually a button that comes up.
Yeah, but their, their things aren't working. Yeah, because y'all have a break. There you go. So. Everyone was, I just wonder if these people think they have to be.
Oh.
Let's stop.
Ladies and gentlemen, will you sit back down and we'll resume the meeting, please? I'm missing two council members.
There's one. There's two. There they are.
There's two. Got them. All right. Where was I? We are at. We adopted that, made a resolution, right? Item 23. We're re... I won't reread it, but anyway, it's 6,400,000 from Special Grants Fund for the purchase and rehabilitation or repurposing of 1210 North Robinson. Are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Councilmember?
Is this 23?
Yes.
Will we get to speak after we vote on it again, too?
We should just go straight through it this time.
Okay. I was going to say for all those concerned about the affordable housing conversation a couple of weeks ago, a few of us have talked about doing town halls, and we'll announce those, but we want to talk about affordable housing and present you with some of the data that we got in our study session. So, hold on to those thoughts because we will be asking. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember?
I just want to clarify that for me, where I stand on this particular issue right now is I support pursuing, exploring the option of this building. I am not currently ready or prepared to spend any more money than what we've budgeted for this. And in my opinion, if it comes back and it says this building is going to cost a lot more to actually make workable, it's not likely something I'm going to want to go forward with, especially if we are able to explore these other options, and it turns out those might be better. So, I do think we need to explore all the options that were presented tonight and the ideas, the hotel, standalone housing. We've talked about tiny homes for years in Norman, about making that easier for people to build. So, for right now, I want to explore the option of this building to see what the problems are with it. And my dad worked there for a long time before. I am aware with the situation in that building and what it's like, and maybe it comes back that it's not going to be workable. But I'd like to find that out first and then make a decision on whether going forward or not. And as it stands, I'm prepared to spend the money that's been given to us by the federal government for this, but I'm not prepared to spend city general fund dollars if it's going to end up costing a whole lot more for this project to be realized. But I think it's worth exploring till we can get to the point and find out what the issue is with this building. I also would like to know, while we're doing this, I would like to know some idea from those that would know, what would be the cost if we did buy the building? What would be the cost of tearing it down and rebuilding something there as opposed to a remodel? I do think those are valid points, and if building something new on that spot were to give us the ability to have more units or more functional, more efficient, more energy efficient, those types of things that would lower the costs, then that's something I'd want us to consider, too. So, those are questions, or questions I'll be looking for answers towards as we do the inspection of this building and find out what's going on with it. But I just want to make it clear that for now, I just want to find out what is the deal with this building? Is it possible? And then that would come back to council for us to make further, further decisions about. And like I said, I'm prepared to use money that's been given to us for this, but I'm not prepared currently to expend further city dollars. If it comes back and says it's going to require a million or 2 million more dollars, then I, you know, I may have a difference of opinion about pursuing that property further. But I do want to explore the other options that have been talked about, and I do want to explore this option until we find out that it's not feasible, and also getting some more information about demo versus remodel and building something new and things like that. So, thank you.
Councilmember Schuler?
We just got to make sure we're, we got our mics on. Got it. I would like to echo the statements and the comments that councilmember Holman just made. I, I agree that this is, and I want to state, too, that this is the first part of this process. We, I don't know how many times we can say that we have to enter into the contract before we can do the studies that you are asking for. We absolutely want to do that. But we have to be able, as a municipality, to give the right and the signature to our city manager to enter into that contract, to then be able to do the studies. So, that is where we are currently. If we find asbestos, if we find significant structural issues or sewer issues, this item will come back to, is, will come back to us to ultimately execute the contract to purchase. And if that is the case, I will not be on board with continuing to purchase this property. I appreciate so much the residents of Norman coming to us and proposing different options and alternatives and asking questions. Those questions make for better projects. They bring us ideas that we might not have thought about before. So, this is very much the process. I know that it feels frustrating sometimes, and it feels contentious, but we need you to keep showing up and to keep communicating with us, asking questions, providing, you know, using your, your, your brain power, you're putting your thinking caps on and bringing us options that we might not have thought about or that have just come on the market while we've been pursuing, you know, other opportunities. I so much appreciate what has been kind of laid out tonight. And, but affordable housing is, is a real need and has been a real need in this community for a really long time. And what I have heard from multiple people here tonight is that I'm getting kind of a consensus vibe that everybody feels like that is something that we should strive to, you know, work on, that we should strive to create more affordable housing. It is a real need in our community, and this is only part of that conversation moving forward. So, yes, to spending our federal dollars up to the point that we have them, but not taking any more from our city funds to, to further invest in this property if it does not look like it is going to be feasible. We will pursue other options and be brought forward with other things. So, just to be clear.
Councilmember Stadler?
Yes, so I also want to reiterate what councilmembers Schuler and Holman stated, that I would love to have something brought to us in a soon study session or even a committee, just to talk about what it, what it would cost to tear down that building and put something else up. What would that look like? Because I know we have had conversations about metal buildings, possible costs. I know that that's probably something you've maybe started looking into, but we could probably get some more in-depth about with the square footage of that property, what could we do with that if we have X amount of dollars to spend. So, that way, I think, even if it does come back and passes inspection, let's say everything passes, but you've also done this study that says we could tear this down and build something bigger with more units, I think we would all agree that that would probably be our choice to do something like that because newer is always better, right? If the cost is the same. Like councilmember Schuler said, if there's asbestos or anything like that, I have zero desire to purchase that building and try to rehab something like that. That's not safe for people to live in, and it's going to be too costly to rehab something like that. I also want to point out that people have pointed out government and private sectors. We're actually doing a partnership. This is going to be a government and private sector partnership. So, yes, the government's buying the building, but private sector is operating it. So, this is a partnership. And then, the only other thing that I wanted to say, was there, because I know I had also asked this, not on the dais, but I know you had mentioned that there, the previous owner had done a study or they had talked about that if there was asbestos, that they would have seen that. Did you get any information on their study or their inspector? Or can you tell us, even if you did get information on that, is it something that the city requires to do their own inspection?
We would always do our own. You know, we just experienced this in the development center of the former Central Library, that we had assurances that the asbestos had been removed. Then we inspected, and the inspector said the asbestos has been removed, and then we found some asbestos. So, we, we, we know how we're going to look. In our conversations with the people at the facility, they believed it had all been removed. That was what they remembered from 2005, but, you know, we're going to verify every square foot of that building, in the attic, in the pipes, in the ductwork, in the floor tile, everything. We're going to be thorough.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm excited for the other options to look at, but I'm, I definitely think tonight we need to just move this forward, and I'm, I'm ready to go.
Thank you, ma'am. Further comments? No further comments. We are going to hear public comment. We're only going to take, we are going to take 30 minutes to hear that, those comments, so that we limit the time. It is getting late. Who is your first?
Is Debbie Carlton here?
Okay. Okay. Steve, you're up.
And, there we go. This vote, right now, I would hope would be unanimous and pretty easy, right? So, now that we've decided we're going to look into this property seriously, we should do it with federal money, and we should do it with the cap. I think everybody should agree on that. So, let's, let's get this one voted and get on to the next issue. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Rachel Wyatt Swanson. I think, I think John has gone to his game of horn.
He has.
Dan Munson.
He's in here.
Gary Barksdale.
Thank you, sir.
Dana Miller. Dana Miller, Ward three. If five other companies have looked at this building and have found a reason to decline, I would think that that would be a red flag. We're going to waste our time having additional inspections done, waste our time, waste our money, where we could be looking at other options and get people into housing sooner. I just don't understand why you want to look at something that even the gentleman with the Corps of Engineers or whatever said, after 45 years old, a building has problems. The building fits that criteria. Five other companies have declined on it. There's got to be a reason. We need to look at other options so we can get people in. Because even if we, even if we start doing all this and it sets us back and we find that it is feasible, how long are we going to take tearing it down to build a new property while these people are still on the street and winter's coming? Winter will be here before we know it. We're not going to get in that building in four months. Appreciate if you reconsider.
Thank you, ma'am.
Cynthia Rogers. Christina Owen. Kristen Howard. Emily Tucker. Alex. Alex Lampier. Caleb Creed. Jake Allen. Kevin Tobar.
Hello, Kevin Tobar, Ward eight. Just wanted to say that I would request you guys to vote yes for this proposition. I think what is, what's important to think about now that we have continued forward is the timeframe of what these things are going to be able to occur. We have many options on our hands now. In order to physically look at all these options, we're going to need some time. So, although we can't have something made in four months, I really do hope that this first step in the door really helps us explore what we can do for these people who are, who are unhoused or those who are going to become vulnerable and have them in a better living situation in the foreseeable future. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
It's on my nose. So... How about Michael Blunk?
Michael Blunk, Ward two. Sorry for that little getting emotional earlier. Apologize for that. But, yeah, this, there shouldn't be any reason not to vote for this. I will say that for people who are concerned about, you know, how there's other projects we could be working on, one of the reasons this became such a contentious project was because this, this very administrative step, if we're being honest, right? Because we're, we were approving our staff to go forward and do a regular inspection. The reason this became a contentious issue in the first place two weeks ago was because it came off a consent docket at a time where this was something that should have been passed unanimously to begin with. Because this was an item that should have remained on consent docket to just move our staff forward. So, I'm glad to see that money got allocated to get ready to go forward with the study. I'm glad to see, hopefully, that we vote again to continue that process. But this shouldn't have become the contentious issue that it was. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Mark Wagner.
Last time. Mark Wagner, Ward five. I don't know why. It seems to me like we had in item number 22, we've already voted to approve the contract to go in and start to look at the things that we need to look at. I don't know why we need to go ahead and allocate money up to 6.5 million at this juncture. We still don't have any clue about what the building is, and we, we've now voted that we do have some time that we can go in and start doing these studies. So, I don't see any reason to do that. As far as other ideas that you want us to keep bringing, there are things like they're building houses in the same format as a 3D printer. They use a great big tube that circles around. We can look in that. You know, if only we had, like, an engineering school or something around that could maybe partner with us and come up with some better ideas. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Russell's gone, isn't he? Oh, there he is.
Russell Rice, Ward two. Man, I just want to thank the city staff. I know not all of them, all of them are here, but this is, had to come up twice and be reworked unnecessarily. So, that's all I really have to say. I'm quite confident it's going to pass. So, thank you, city staff. Y'all have a great day.
Robert McGee. Nope. Hannah Smith.
Hey, Hannah Smith, Ward one. I think we're all about ready to go to bed, and I don't think anybody's minds are going to be changed. So, I would just like to encourage everybody else, when your name gets called, what have you just said? I wave. All right. It's a thought, it's a suggestion. Have a good one.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. That was the end of the, end of the speakers. The motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
The motion passes five to three, voting against councilmember Tortorello, councilmember Lynn, Mayor Heikala.
Thank you. Item 24. Consideration and/or adoption, or approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of ordinance 02223, Tac 1, upon second and final reading. An ordinance of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending section 429.1 flood hazard district of the zoning ordinance, subject, subsection 1, to add citation to Oklahoma statutory authority for local regulation and providing for the severability thereto. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second. Motion in second. Thank you. Let me change my page. Jason Murphy. Would you join us, sir?
Well, this is important, but I'll try to keep it very brief. My name is Jason Murphy. I'm the Stormwater Program Manager for City of Norman, and I have a ordinance revision for our floodplain ordinance. Let me go the other direction. The city's floodplain ordinance was adopted in 1975 as a requirement of joining the National Flood Insurance Program, NFIP. The NFIP participation enables homeowners, businesses, renters, et cetera, to purchase federally backed flood insurance to protect their property, as well as allows the city to access FEMA disaster relief assistance and access to certain grant ties like hazard mitigation grants. In, since 1975, we've revised the ordinance 14 times. Back in April of this year, FEMA came in to do a community assistance visit, which is basically an audit of our floodplain administration, where they go through our permits, they tour the city, they look at our ordinance, et cetera. For the most part, we had very good marks. However, when it came to our floodplain ordinance, the seven-page document of checkboxes of things we have to have in that ordinance, we were missing one thing, and that is a clear statutory, a clear reference to the statutory authority given to us by the state of Oklahoma to administer the floodplain. So, following that visit, we haven't had this before, and it's never been an issue. It's come up now. My understanding is there's some lawsuits in other states that have made it necessary to make sure that that's just clear, and FEMA's now going to have been, begin requiring this of all NFIP communities. So, it's just a housekeeping. So, after that visit, had conversations with our, our legal staff here in the city, and we put together the wording to add to the ordinance, sent it to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board for review. They had no comments, as well as we put it out to our floodplain permit committee. To do that, we offered the opportunity for, for public input and comment. We had none, and it passed unanimously through the floodplain permit committee, at which point we took it to the planning commission. Were again, opportunity for public comment, discussion, et cetera. We had none. It passed unanimously through the planning commission as well. Brought it to council for first reading on August 9th, and here we are. If you pass it today for, for second reading, yes, great. If you pass it this evening, then it will become effective 30 days from now. This last slide that I have is just showing the language that was added, and language in red is new. There's also a few other notations in there. But again, the only thing it's saying is pointing out the specific Oklahoma statute delegating the responsibility and authorization for local governments to administer the floodplain. This changes nothing about our permitting process. It changes nothing about the regulations of those, the ability for anybody to develop or anything like that in another permitting process. It is just a housekeeping, clearly outlining that. And with that, if anybody has any questions?
Councilmember?
Awesome.
Awesome. It is... Do we have anybody? Do we have one person signed?
Steve Ellis. Okay.
Thank you, sir. Are there, no, no, final comments. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
The ordinance is adopted unanimously on second reading.
Item 25. Jeez, I'm just jumping ahead myself. I want to go to bed, I guess. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or... On final reading. Have motion in second. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
On final reading unanimously.
Thank you all. Item number 25. Consideration of adoption, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of an ordinance 02223, Tac 4, upon second and final reading, amending section 22 dot 420, planned unit developments, and section 22, 442 dot 1 amendments, to establish a postponement policy concerning certain development applications presented to city council for consideration or postponement. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading. Have motion in second. Ms. Makala, or who are you?
Thank you, Mayor Heikala. My name is Beth Makala. I'm an Assistant City Attorney with the City of Norman. I'm here to present this ordinance, and this is just a breakdown of where the ordinance language currently stands. 442.1 of our zoning ordinance addresses city council consideration of zoning amendments. That language actually does not address what happens in the situation that postponements are requested. Over the years, there's been a non-formalized policy of deferring to applicants when they request postponements, usually for reasons of conti- request postponements, usually for reasons of continuing to vet an application and get feedback. We've been seeing over the years certain items being postponed numerous times, the same item, and the same types of items being subject to those numerous postponements. So, there was some concern regarding the effect of that, not only on city resources like city council time and review, but also city staff time, and then, of course, non-applicant interested parties that would attend every public hearing after each postponement. So there was a wish to avoid any undue burden flowing from those numerous postponements. So the Oversight Committee did consider amendments, and what city staff proposed as a solution would be to amend 442.1 to actually address postponements. And so, the language that's in the suggested ordinance, which you can see, as you read it, you can tell, generally, an applicant is going to be permitted one postponement as a matter of right. There are, there's some language in there that would take care of unforeseen, unique or extenuating circumstances, but generally, they're going to be given that as a right. And that's something that wasn't in the ordinance before. They wouldn't have necessarily been able to have language to count on, because it was a non-formalized policy. The further language, though, regarding requests says it's entirely subject to City Council discretion. Now, this is actually, of course, the way it has always been, except for the non-formalized policy that was in place. So really, what this language does is signal to developers, this might be the way we've done it, but it's not necessarily going to be the way that we go forward doing it. We're going to evaluate whether or not it's in the best interest of everyone, including interested non-applicant parties, on whether or not to grant that. A further amendment that city staff noticed and would suggest is to add language to Section 420 of the zoning ordinance, just to signal that change and relate back to it, just for consistency's sake, but it's a non-substantive in that section. So the goals would be to promote efficient review and effective timeline, and to incentivize vetting of these projects on the front end before a lot of council staff and non-applicant time is spent. And with that, I will ask for any questions you might have.
Councilmember Schuler?
So you mentioned that this is really just clarification of what we had kind of been allowing. There was always, whenever an applicant, I guess, requested a postponement, we always have to vote as council to allow that postponement to go forward or not, correct?
That is true, and as a matter of controlling the agenda, there is quite a bit of discretion in that vote on City Council's plate. So what this change, this change signals that those votes won't necessarily always tend in the same direction, but technically, this language solidifies a little bit, an expectation of that first postponement being a yes. It kind of grants a little bit of a right and sets a standard for it.
But that doesn't mean that there couldn't, in the future, be multiple postponements, depending on what the project is and what the conversations are, or extenuating circumstances, like you mentioned. So this isn't solidifying the fact that there's only ever going to be one postponement, period.
That is true. It says it will be subject to a vote at City Council's discretion.
Okay, so just, just to be clear, there could be continued postponements given by council if the applicant asks and, you know, gives a reason that is, you know, I guess, seen as applicable for the process.
City Council would have the ability to vote that way.
Okay, thank you.
This is an opportunity for members of the public. Thank you, Ms. Muckler. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item.
Cindy?
Good evening again. It's late. I'm tired, you're tired. I think this is really important. There's been, in my opinion, abuses of the postponements being an automatic thing, and expecting citizens and neighbors to show up multiple times and not knowing if there will be a postponement, I think is a travesty. So I'm all for this, that it's not an automatic thing. You can't just keep putting things off until you think a small crowd's going to show up. So please vote yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Steve?
Steve Ellis, Ward 4. I'm going to slightly even disagree with my wife here and just say, I'm not 100% sure why we're, we're making the policy that you get a free postponement to begin with. It seems to me that all the postponements should really be at the discretion of the council, and the expectation should be that if you have a need for a postponement, you should be able to ask for it. So, the, the policy for two-plus here seems to me to be the wise policy. So, if anybody has the gumption to make that as an amendment, I'd be happy, but it's better than it was, so that's good.
Thank you, sir. That's the end. All right, are there any final comments from council regarding this?
I think it's always the, should be the proponents prerogative to be able to pull whatever they, they have, that the project that they're working on with the city, it's their project. I understand that there is a little bit of burden if there's protest to those citizens involved, but that's part of staying active in your government. It's their project, they should be able to pull it. I definitely think this needs some more fleshing out, should probably go back to committee. Not that I'm afraid of putting some standards on it, but it almost makes it like, hey, you get one, and then, I, I think they should be in control of what comes in front of councils. It, it's their prerogative to even bring something to council, and it should stay with them to keep it with council or bring it back. That's it.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember?
After having participated in so many of these development issues over the years, and having been through some that have been postponed multiple times, and seen the frustration that is created for neighbors and residents to have to come back out multiple times, and including the developers too, there not being any clarification or written expectation of what they can expect, I think this is a good path to get us down the way of, there still is, council still has discretion, the developers still have discretion, but that everybody coming into the meeting would know that this is the expectation we have, that you could potentially get a postponement, but don't think that you're going to be guaranteed multiple ones, you're going to be able to come back and like stall the public out type of thing. And so, I think this is a good path on getting us to the point where people coming into City Hall with development issues, neighbors and the developers have a little bit more written clarity about what our expectation is when it comes to postponement. So, that may need some additional work going forward. We might find out we need to adjust it some more, but I think this is a good start. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
The ordinance is adopted on second reading by a vote of 7 to 1, voting against Councilmember Lynn.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading. Second. Have motion in second. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
The ordinance is adopted on final reading, voting against Councilmember Lynn, vote 7 to 1.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 26, consideration of approval, rejection, or postponement of a request to authorize the city manager of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, and the Norman Municipal Authority to sign a petition for property owned by the City of Norman and the Norman Municipal Authority in support of the proposed downtown business improvement district. I'll entertain a motion to approve item 26.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion in second. Ms. Walker, would you make a presentation?
Sure. Just real briefly, you all have discussed the proposed downtown bid. The city has been asked to sign on behalf of our properties, both the City of Norman and the Norman Municipal Authority own property in the proposed district, and we are being asked to sign the petition. If council approves this item tonight, we would move forward with a resolution on council's agenda, setting a public hearing. This action item would not itself create the bid. We would still have to have that public hearing and that action item by council at a later date.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any comments from council regarding this item? Which one got up first? Councilmember Holman?
Just wanted to clarify one point about it. Does, does the city or county signing off of it, signing off on this, does that put them over or under? If we don't, are they under, if we do, are they over?
The county, my understanding is...
I prefer the businesses, I guess, be the deciding factor and not the city necessarily when it comes to that.
My understanding is the county has already agreed to sign, but it was contingent on the city also participating, and with those properties, I know they'll be over 50. I'm not sure what the number is without them.
So, would it rely on the city and the county signing off for it to pass?
I, I don't know. Cameron Brewer is here as one of the proponents of the Business Improvement District, and he may be, may be able to tell you more.
Okay. Is there a presentation or anything?
We don't have it yet. Isn't that Cameron sitting out there in the...
Yes.
Oh, oh, shoot, I'm looking at the wrong guy, wrong target. Mr. Brewer, would you please approach and, and... I need new glasses.
Thank you, mayor and council. Councilmember Holman, I believe your question will be answered, just in the comments I'll make here. Just to clarify again, this item is in part due to a process that the county commissioners had held a vote in July, that they voted 3-0 unanimously to include their property as part of a petition to support the bid, and basically include themselves as ratepayers in the Business Improvement District, however, is contingent upon the City of Norman signing the same petition. So, so this, this is allowing basically time for the county to sign, following the city signing their petition, to be included as part of the petition's support. To your, Councilmember Holman, to your question, so the metric that we've been working with to date has been, basically, if you exclude city and county property, we had been working towards a goal of over 50% support of all private property ownership. We, we met that goal, and if you include city and county property in that overall calculation, that brings it below the 50%. But again, our, you know, as, our being the bid committee, our intention has been that if you took out city and county property, you had over 50% support private property ownership, that's kind of the intention of how the statute is intended to read from the beginning. So, I will note that there's precedent for a number of bids in the, in the state that have city and county-owned property and that are part of bid ratepayers within the district itself. The City of Oklahoma City is an example. 23 years ago, when they passed the original bid, they didn't even, at the time, had, they didn't even have 45, or they had, have 50% of private property ownership support. They had 45%. City and county voted, and that sent it over the 50%. Since that time, there are two iterations after that, basically 10-year periods, they've had similar scenario, that city and county included, if you include their ownership in the total percentage, it was required to get over the 50% threshold. So, so just to kind of point out a relevant example, just up the road here, the, a few other comments I'll make here, the, this, this is part of a public-private partnership, the Business Improvement District itself. This is a great example of bid ratepayers, an entire bid area working together, city, county, and private property owners, in addition to, in addition to certain quasi-governmental entities like PDPC that own their building as well. This is, is part of the intention of a bid, is that this is maintaining public area, and part of that public area is property that's owned by the city and county. And so, that's why we're here tonight, to consider that petition, that would again allow the county to sign their petition, and at that point, there'd be a total of, I believe, 57% support of all property owned within the district.
Mr. Brewer, a question please before.
Yes.
How, when you said before the city and the county get in there, there is a percentage of business owners that are there. What is that percentage?
So, you're saying excluding city and county, is that what you mean?
No, excluding.
So, the, with just the property of private property owners, it's, I believe, all, you're including city and county in that calculation, is that correct?
No.
Okay, excluding, yeah, so we're at, when we submitted petitions, we were at 51.5%.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Lynn?
Yeah, I just want to clarify on that, because I was called earlier today, and I just remember I heard that we got 31% without the city and the county.
Thirty-eight percent with all, with all properties.
Question I was asking.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to get at. So you only have 38% support on this without the city and the county.
With, if, if you include city and county property in there as well, correct?
So, so the standard for the petition is, it has to be signed by the owners of record of more than one-half of the area liable to be assessed under the proposal. So if you include all of the property owned by the city, Norman Municipal Authority, and by the county into that area, then you have 38% of private property, of people signing the petition, because it includes a larger area. If you take that area out, he has, what did you say, 51?
51.5%.
5%.
So which standard were you, I don't, I'm not, I'm not...
To approve the plan, which is not tonight, you would have to have 50% of the area, owners of record representing 50% of the area.
And the city and the county by interstate statute are not excluded from that, that calculation?
So, but right now, if we exclude them, we're only at 38% of the area. Is that right? No, if you...
If you exclude them from...
The approval.
But it, but the property's included in the district, then you would have 38%. Yes, but, but we're not acting...
Taking the whole district, taking the whole district, including city, county property before it's approved by city and county, you only have 38% of the other actual business owners that are going to be on the hook for this.
Thirty-eight percent of the total area that includes city and county.
So I'm saying, of the total area, you're only at the 38%. Is that right or wrong?
Correct.
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's it. So if you don't have city and county, you don't have, I'm looking for a little bit more support from the business owners on this than instead of the city and county putting it over the hump. I'll tell you, I'm for this. If we can get there and convince people, right now, when they're just sitting at 38% of the private, private owners of this whole area, that's not, that's like forcing this on those people.
Well, again, if you're, you're talking about, we have over 50% of private property within the bid district.
Does it include everybody, though? Does it include all of it?
The denominator, when, when you say over 50%, it excludes the city and county property. When you start including that property, because we haven't acted to sign it, and the county acted to sign it, contingent on our acting to sign it, it, it goes down to 38% as a...
And again, as a committee, our, our goal all along was to make sure that we had over 50% support of private property ownership, because that, you know, as, even though by state statute, you're not required to meet that metric, we felt it was important that at least 50% of private property owners within the district supported this, this initiative before bringing this to public inclusion, essentially, so.
All right. Councilmember Schuler?
Do we know what the percentage of the area total is owned by city and county?
It's 22%. Well, 22%, which includes Cleveland County Health as well. In the study session, I made some comments that the state attorney general had made a ruling that certain allocation of funds that Cleveland County Health entity receives is not eligible for use of payment of bid assessments, essentially. You know, again, we, they're not excluded from bid assessment, so that may be addressed later. But they felt that they, with that guidance or counsel, that they could not sign the petition on behalf. So I believe, and I'd have to go back and check this, I believe with Cleveland County, excluding Cleveland County Health and city, it's about 18% in total.
Okay. So we've got 78% of the rest of it is owned by property owners.
Correct.
Right, not city and county. And 50% of that 78% area has, 51.5% has said yes, has signed on to the bid.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, sorry, I gotta do some...
I know.
I can't do mental math that quickly.
There's some methods here, so.
So, you know, half of 80 would be 40, so 40% of the total area without us, is that what we're saying?
Yeah, it's 38%. Exactly, yeah, so.
Okay, just making sure that we're like doing all the math calculations, and everything is adding up.
Yeah. And again, I just want to point out there, obviously, we need to make our decisions here as a city. There's precedent for this City of Oklahoma City. I, you know, as ratepayers, city and county are included in the total property for a reason because they're not excluded from paying assessments. And so the City of Oklahoma City, again, as an example, all three, all three times the bid has passed, has the, it's been a similar scenario where there's been less than 40% where city and county inclusion put it over the 50% mark.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Chairman Tortorella?
You know, getting there with the math, okay, thanks for explaining that to you over there, over here. You know, to clarify, the last time we had this, this conversation, the study session, there was a, there was a document that was, actually, go back to the Friday that we were here, you talked to the business owners, the property owners. They were complaining about a letter that was sent out that was deceiving. You recall that conversation here? And then last week during the study session, we brought it back up again, and I think we asked you for a copy of that letter. I don't ever receive a copy of the letter, so do you have a copy here for us to look at?
I do not have a copy here. I sent the letter to Brenda Hall the next morning, and I requested that it be sent to council. I can, I real, I, I'm under the understanding she's out of town currently. So if I need to send that to another member of staff to then send out to council, I can forward that here tonight and send it out. But I did send that to her the next day.
Yeah, I kind of like the idea of what you're talking about here, but there's been a lot of talk on the other side too as well, so I want to hear both sides of the story. But, you know, I don't want this to be a situation where, you know, the ship has left and crossed the Atlantic, and we're trying to book passage on that same ship, because they claim that you've had time, ahead of time, to get these signatures here. So I think it's crucial that we see that letter and see how it was stated, and I'd like to hear the other side have this conversation, too. The math, I get. I know why you're doing it. I know why the county needs to be part of this, as long as, as well as the city. And I appreciate your time, both times, getting in front of council and having this conversation. And I'm good right now with what you're saying, and I look forward to having this conversation with the other side, too, as well. Just get a balance and see what their opposition is in moving forward.
Sure. And just to point out, we, just based on the schedule, if, assuming this goes through and then we move forward with first and second hearing, I believe we, the schedule is now second hearing and potential adoption for September 27th. Just to point out, just to counterbalance here, we will have a number of supporters speaking that evening. This is really supposed to be just a, an item process as much as anything. So just want to point that out, that there will be some speakers in dissent here on this item, but we're really focusing on that, the future date as the, both the counterbalance to the full discussion, so.
Councilmember Pecat?
One of my questions to be answered, but I'm going to pick you off here and say I have City of Oklahoma City. Several other bids, and I know they bring a lot of generated economic development and tourism, and some really great things for those areas, so I'm fully in support of this and excited to see it take it to the next level.
Thank you.
Councilmember Schuler?
Hopefully no one's asked, but...
Just, no, you're, no, well, kind of. I remember us talking about the number of property owners within the district. What is the number, the total number of property owners?
I believe it's 153 in total.
And so how many unique property owners signed on to the, in support of...
I would have to go double-check that number, but it's roughly 37 and 38. But there's a number of major property owners in there that, major being they, you know, own anywhere from 3% to 5% as well, so.
Okay, so, but there is a mix of our smaller parcels and our larger parcels within that blend. It's not just the large parcels that are taking everything.
Yeah, absolutely.
To push it to that percentage.
Yeah, it's been interesting to watch petition support come in, but not only smaller property owners and larger property owners, but a nice mix of the geographic area as well, both the kind of outerlying streets in addition to Main Street, so.
Is there also a good blend of the different types of business, like the businesses that are on those parcels? So like, I know in downtown, we've got, you know, we've got retail, we have banks, we have services, different things. So is there also a blend of support within those different types of services that are offered?
Yeah, absolutely. We have, all banks within the Business Improvement District have signed on in support. I'll just point that out to begin with. But we have a number of businesses or a number of properties that have retail and restaurant in their business, in addition to, I think, three different attorney's offices, several office buildings as well. And I'll also point that out that there is sometimes a question of, you know, is this, are bids only supporting retail and restaurant? And we've had support across a diversity of types of businesses and property types that have said, you know, we want to see this. And in many cases, with the office and more professional services offices, they see this as a quality of life measure that, kind of think of this as your front yard. If you walk out every day from your office, you want to be in an environment that's a lot more inviting, so.
Thank you.
Any more questions from council? This is an opportunity for members of the public, so thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You're part of the public, I understand, but...
Sure.
Bruce Ramey? It's Bruce Ramey? Yeah.
Dr. Berger.
Hello. I'm Bruce Ramey, Ward 3. I'm the owner of two Ward 4 storefronts with multiple tenants at 306 and 308 East Main. This is all very ominous. By asking the city to sign on to their petition, what the BID committee is doing seems desperate and extremely divisive, and will result in unfairly pitting private property owners against local government entities such as the city, the county, and their tax-free nonprofit organizations. The downtown property, private property owners are the ones who will suffer, not the city, not the county. This so-called assessment will result in a dramatic increase in their property taxes. In many cases, increases of 25% or more locked in during the next 10 years. This is an outrageous heavy lift to expect from those property owners, many of whom are already struggling to keep rents reasonable and to make ends meet. This is not a single tangible, there is not a single tangible structural downtown improvement in this proposal. The city and county should remain absolutely neutral or abstain from signing on to any petition that results in targeting private property owners with much higher taxes. This is especially true since, due to the city's thumb on the scale, the net effect is that it will be accomplished by government fiat and not by a general consensus of the tax-paying voters of downtown Norman. By relying solely on soaking the property owners with what amounts to inflationary higher taxes in an already inflationary economy, you will guarantee that the tenants of those properties will be paying much higher rents in the near future. Make no mistake, this so-called assessment is an involuntary tax on property. No euphemistic, sugar-coated terminology will change that. The collection of this tax will be administered by the county assessor and will be enforced by liens, threats of foreclosure, and ultimately sheriff sales if it is not paid. If this costly proposal is approved, you will see even more empty storefronts and properties for sale downtown, not fewer. I would urge that the city reject this BID proposal in its current form, perhaps find a way to provide the services we are already paying for, or go back to the drawing board and ask the citizens of Norman if they would be willing to consider a dedicated MAPS-type sales tax if improving the business district is really the ultimate goal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Brad Goodman?
Good morning, Mayor. My name is Brad Goodman, and I own some property within the proposed bid. It's interesting that the city and the county property is included within the bid, and part and parcel of that is the city is going to sign on to pay the bid, Board of Directors, $57,000 a year in tax money, and plus, they're going to assess themselves $24,000 a year, and the county's going to put in another 20-some thousand in assessments. They're allowing, the city and the county are allowing themselves to be assessed. So it would be interesting if you all need to do one of the other, one of two things, either stay in the bid and hopefully not sign on to it and let the private property owners decide it and without your intervention, or they could possibly delete you and the county from the equation, which I wonder how many of the, said, I've never seen, we haven't been allowed to see the petition yet, and I understand it's still a work in progress. But it either needs to be one way or the other way. We have signed protests that we filed with the city of right at 50 property owners. Good question. Ours is mainly small property owners that would really be hit hard by this added assessment. I have a minute and a half, and I want to get to a couple other things. The proposed, the bid for downtown is a huge commitment that you would impose on the property owners within the district for the next 10 years. Many of the property owners within the proposed district have filed protests asking to reject the bid. We are here tonight because they are nowhere near the 50% of the property owners want a bid within, as the bid is currently constructed. I've got some major issues with the bid, but I'm running out of time. I would say that it is, I do not feel it is appropriate for you to vote against the wishes of so many of the property owners within the proposed bid area by voting to include yourself in the petition. You are not a business, so your input should be limited oversight functions as an impartial It was small businesses and property owners who brought downtown back in the early 90s by committing to revitalizing it. I would not want to, those businesses and newer small businesses pushed out of downtown by higher rental rates in it. Oh, boy. This is from the frequently asked questions from the people. Because the formation of the bid...
Richard Dow.
I'm the pres, can you hear me? I'm the president of Dow Properties. Our company owns the Midtown Plaza, which is in the bid district. Now, I've been on the bid board in Oklahoma City almost from its time of inception 23 years ago. Now, there's something very different between what's going on here and what went on in Oklahoma City. And number one, we didn't have the protests in Oklahoma City. There were people that just didn't seem to care one way or the other, whether they had their bid or not. While here, you have a very different situation. First of all, with respect to the state statute, it requires one or the other for this to work, regardless of what you as a city decide to do with your property. Either you have to have 51% of the private property support this thing, minimum, or 51% of the property owners, minimum, supporting it. Now, I'm going to give the results of our survey. Now, what is going to be confusing to you is that I believe that the, well, first of all, the number of property owners we have that are actually individuals. Sometimes people have three or four corporations. For example, our company has 11 corporations. So we did it two ways. I looked at it, how many individuals do you have here? In other words, you might be fully in control of four corporations, so it was just one person. There's really 130 individuals that own property in the proposed business district. Now, of that 130 people, according to our records, only 22 are supporting the bid. Now, so if you take our records right now, the things that I, now, there's still 42 people we've not been able to get a hold of. However, you take the 50 people that have signed the opposition to the bid, in other words, it's not no, but hell no, we do not want this thing. And then you have 17 people who've said they refuse to sign the bid documents. That gives you a total of 67, which means the percentage of property owners is really 52% are against it. So in other words, that strikes down one way that legally you can have a bid. Now, if you count the number of people by corporations, it's going to be the same solution. Now, let's go to the square footage. What's happened here is a lot of people were misled about what this bid was about. And when we started educating them, they started saying, hey, I signed the bid document, but guess what? I want to un-sign it. And I said, well, the only way you can do that is you have to sign a protest. So I would say that Mr. Brewer has probably lost five or six percent at least of his support. My estimate is they've got about 43% by acreage of the private sector supporting it. We have put in a Freedom of Information Act thing, that was last week, that we wanted to see this. We've not seen it, because they're hiding something. And what they're hiding is they've got to take those protests we have, which people have reversed their vote and take it off of their total. Now, it's something that I would think should be extremely alarming to elected officials.
Sir? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Fred Dow.
And most of the people that I've met when he started this, because he started the protest, and a lot of the businesses, and I went and talked to them, they were so, they were just thanking, thank God, someone's coming in here and giving us a voice. This forum should have been a part of the bid letter that went out, which no one read. That's the bottom line. So you're in a constant state of education. A lot of people signed it, but they brought up all the concerns, like, why is the city getting involved? Why do they, why can they opt out after one year and we're stuck here for 10, yet they're going to be counted in the vote? That's wrong, and that's what they think. And that's all I got to say. I don't need three minutes. I don't need three minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Brad Worcester.
Brad Worcester, 132 North Santa Fe, across the street, building owner, resident, business owner, and tenant, all in one little building. It's been a while before I spoke, since I spoke before council. I was told I had to decide if I was for or against this before I could sign up to speak, and I asked if I could check both boxes, and that wasn't an option, so I'm on the no side of this today. And it's because of the way it's been presented, in all honesty. There hasn't been much information. I'm on the Board of Directors for Downtowners, and I couldn't get information. So I spoke with Cameron a lot in the last few days, and several times before that. Cameron and I get along. We have a lot of the same thoughts on a lot of things. I'd like to see more about this. I don't think it's been transparent. I don't think it's really good for us to be able to come up here and in three minutes express our concerns to you all to make a decision of this magnitude. Came up in June, June seems like yesterday to me. It's flown by. September's going to be here in the morning, as far as I can tell. So I'd like you to postpone this, and I'd like to be able to see those numbers. I'd like to be able to come back and show you all a map to see how this lays out, who supports it, who doesn't. Normally, you get a protest map. You don't have that today because one doesn't exist. I haven't seen it, and the information available as far as the property owners is public record, but it's already been created. I can hire somebody to go create all of that and spend county records, inputting their square footages, or I can get that spreadsheet, and then I can show you how it relates. It does seem to lean towards large property owners. When you're going on a basis of gross area, say you have a bank parking lot that is three-quarters of an acre, then that one vote is 10 individual business owners that have a 3,700 square foot store, and it's for a parking lot owned by a bank. So there's a significant amount of big players that are skewing the numbers a little. And I'm still not sure I'm against it. Honestly, I'm not. I'd like to be able to see it. I'd like to be able to, everybody to see it. I think the idea of the bid is a good idea. I think it needs to happen, probably. I don't know if it's January 1 of this coming year, which is what's proposed. And there's a lot going on in downtown Norman. James Gardner, Gray Street, maybe some of those infrastructure things could happen first, but please postpone.
Attorney in private practice down there trying to make a living, and it's going to be hard to do if this would pass. Those of you who have been working very hard with the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority and their steel over there on the east side, folks, this is even worse in the sense that this has been done in such secrecy. Evidently, a small group of people have been working on this thing since at least January of this year. The property owners, us, we did not find out about it until late June of this year. So this small group's been working, you just heard him say that he's on the board of the Downtowners and didn't know anything about it. So this group is, like the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority is subject to the Open Meeting Act, these folks are not. And they have been working in secret, and they have been working and coming up with these rules and what they want to happen. We've had no say. They, there is no structural component to this at all, as they've stated before. All they say so far is they want to throw out some park benches and plant some flowers. Well, folks, this is a lot of money for that. The type of business on the parcels not being taken into account to determine the assessment on these properties. A professional office, which will receive absolutely no benefit from the street closures that's a cause and the out-of-town partygoers, which seem to be the focus of the bid, because that's what we have been told. So why are businesses that, like us, that are receiving no benefit, being assessed at the same level or even higher than other businesses who may benefit from this? Businesses like mine that front Main Street are being assessed at two and sometimes three times the property on adjoining streets. Now, how is that fair? Why do they have a bigger vote and they can vote us to pay more money than they do? Our streets, Main Street, looks fine. As I've told the mayor before, the trash is taken out every time, it's not rolling over like they've claimed. There are a lot of things that are not being done right here. This is being skewed by a few big property owners. It's not fair to the regular business, normal business owner. The letter that we received was not a good clarification of what was going on there. Nothing in this letter indicated that the property owner was going to be assessed some amount. The property owner was not informed that if they did not pay this amount, that their property could be foreclosed on. This is bad for a business. People are struggling to make a living now. There's a recession on, and we don't need more taxes with this recession. We have enough problems with small businesses trying to make a living. Help us make a living.
If I, tonight, we're not approving the bid, we're just simply stating whether or not the city is joining the property area, our property.
Correct. First, we will be signing, or authorizing, Ashley Darrell to sign the petition.
Okay. Okay.
I will say that I have a little bit of problems with this, for the issues presented, but my question was on the, we're able to opt out if we sign as a city after a year? Somebody said that, is that correct?
I'm not aware of a statute just for the city. There are provisions for how to end the bid early. Maybe that was what they were referencing.
Okay, because I hadn't heard that one yet. Real quick, I'll say this, I'm leaning towards this. I like the ideas that it brings forth. I like what you're selling with it. If it comes to fruition, I just think right now that there are too many questions surrounding it. It feels like you're doing it by force, and you're getting the city and the county on board to be forceful against these other property owners. I don't want to see that. I don't want to pit that against that. And right now, I would make a motion to table this and get some more questions. I think we need to, I think we need to hear both sides. We need to see protest maps. All we got in study session was presented from one side, and there's definitely some things that still need to be flushed out. So I'll make a motion to table this and bring it back to study session.
Can I go looking at the calendar and find out what the next, what the most effective petition date looks like?
And I, I just say this, I say this because right now I feel like it's ripe with lawsuit, and then if you do pass it, and it's going to go, it's going to get sued, and then it's going to be held up even longer anyway, so why not? If we're going to do it, let's get it right in the first place.
We could do it on August 30th. It's a petition Tuesday.
Are we?
So postpone it to a specific August 30th, if that--
Postpone it to September 13th, so the next special between.
So what was it?
Because if you don't come back to a voting meeting, it would be a postponed to September 13th unless you want to stick it to August 30th at the discussion session.
You were talking to study session.
So councillor, can you state that motion as we understand it?
Well, it depends on how you want your motion to work, Councilmember. But you could postpone to August 30th, that's a study session date, that's a date where we can have further discussion. That would not normally be an action item date. So we could, we could post it as a special session and take action that night, or you could postpone this to September 13th, which is your next council meeting, so that we could have a study session on the 30th to discuss. Okay, so it'd be a motion to postpone to September 13th.
Study session on the 30th.
Hey, okay, that's perfect.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion on the floor is to--
Postpone. Item 26 to September 13th, and I don't have to state the special session after that. The motion on the floor is to postpone item 26 to September 13th. Any discussion? Councilmember Peacock.
Does this have any kind of negative impact on the timing to gather the signatures and everything? I know there's a window to gather the signatures.
I don't think it had to do with gathering the signatures. I think it was more a window to try and time the invoicing if this were to pass and the assessment roll get adopted, close to how we do our other bid, which would tie it closer to, you know, taxes and when those are due.
So postponing this wouldn't jeopardize the bid?
No, I don't think so.
No, he did what I was going to ask. You answered my question about delays, so I'm good.
Mine was for the motion there, but yeah, similar questions, but did just want to kind of clarify that I was okay with a signing off, but I did have an expectation that when this came back, that it would be, I would prefer it not be a situation where the city or the county is what puts it over. I would rather the businesses decide that themselves, and then the city and county are on top of that. Would be a goal I would prefer, but going forward with that, but I'm not opposed to a postponement either.
Councilmember Schuler.
Is it typical that the city or the county would be asked in a meeting prior to when we would actually, I guess, get the resolution to sign off on the petition before we vote on the resolution to hold the public hearing? Is this a typical timeline?
Well, this is only our second bid, so I wouldn't say anything's typical, but--
I mean, is, how, how has it been done in other cities?
I don't know. I will say the statute says that the petition gets turned in when you have 50 percent, owners of record representing 50 percent of the area liable to be assessed, sign the petition. And at that point, you file the petition, and then we set the hearing. We don't have that yet.
Okay. And then, I mean, the expectation would be the next part of the process, is that that is when we have the public hearing, where we would have all of the details that we're lining out with the official protest map and all of the, or the, you know, official petition signatures and the percentage of, you know, people that are saying yes to the bid, or, you know, if there is any protest. That is when we would typically have the discussion and conversation is alongside that public hearing.
Right. Because that's more going to do with the creation of the bid, not whether or not the city signs. So that's when you'll get that information. I will say, I don't know that we were anticipating doing a protest map because we do those for zoning items, and this isn't a zoning item. But we do have our GIS folks looking at the petition as we know it, as well as all of the protest letters to determine whether or not that changes the percentage as they come in.
Kind of along the questioning of, I guess, Councilmember Holman and Councilmember Peacock, are there any dates by which this would need to be completed?
No, there isn't. This isn't like a referendum petition or something like that, where you have to, you only have so many days to circulate the petition. So I think it's more of a preference for invoicing if it does get adopted, but that's not something we can't work with and work around.
So would this delay the start of the bid?
Yes.
So we have a January date in the proposal?
I believe so, yeah.
So is that us moving this timeline back put in jeopardy any of the signatures or anything else moving forward?
No, it really just changes when you start invoicing property owners and when the bid gets money to do the improvements. So you have to do, so if this were to be set for a public hearing on the 13th, then typically what we have done with the other bid is we would put the assessment roll on first reading, I think on the second meeting in September, and then, or maybe the first reading. Anyway, we would have the assessment roll and the item creating the bid at the same meeting. It could be the second meeting in September, first meeting in October. The assessment roll is adopted by ordinance, so that has a first reading, a second reading, and then 30 days before it's effective. And then after that 30-day mark is when we would start issuing assessments. So it backs it up some, but it's not, it doesn't mean it's impossible to get done in this calendar year.
Okay.
Any other questions? Motion is to postpone item 26 to September 13th. Do it. I'm always forgetting the public. Is there anybody that wants to add more? You may.
I just have two comments. Beginning first, I just want to point out again that--
There are a number of supporters that were, are planning to speak on the night of second hearing that have not spoken tonight. So essentially, we've been hearing one side. I just want to make that very clear. Also want to point out that there's been comments about the major property owners and small businesses, how this may hurt small businesses. Several of the major property owners have more small businesses than any other property owners in all of downtown, two of them being Mr. Adair and the Clintons. And they own some significant property that has some of the best retail, small business, call it mom-and-pop type owners in all of downtown. And it's, in many, in many cases, it's been their tenants who have said, yes, we want this. Speaking to postponement, this is my concern. I understand the concerns that have been addressed as well. My concern is about the start date of January 1st. We've been working on a timeline that has already been pushed for good reasons to date to make sure that, we do have petitions in hand, and that allows us time as a bid board to put together a board of anywhere from nine to 13 board members, go out and hire an executive director, train that executive director to be ready by January 1st, and basically have the bid come out of the gates being as successful as it could possibly be. First year with any business improvement district is key. That's building that goodwill in the first year, showing that the value in the assessments and what's been added is really important. The other piece that can be very confusing is a potential for a partial year assessment. So if you do not begin the bid on January 1st, let's say you begin this, just as an example, March 1st, property owners will be assessed for a 10-month period. That means the second year, they will receive a bid bill that is for 12 months, and there is confusion as to why did, why did my bid assessment go up by this X percentage when they've been promised that there is a cap on a bid from one year to the next? And so there's an education process that's involved there that every property owner who receives this bill, you have to explain, well, the previous year is for 10 months, and this year is for 12 months. And so, again, it just creates confusion, but I think more importantly, that January 1st start, from the time of adoption, that allows the-- importantly, that January 1 start, from the time of adoption, that allows the bid...
No worries. I had actually signed up, so that must, to speak on this issue, that must have been part of the snafus of signing up. At least I thought I did. So generally, I am in favor and support bid types of project, because the assessment is, and is linked to where the benefits go. And I don't know a lot about the specifics of this one, but it's always going to be challenging when you have different uses. And our downtown has some weird things going on down there, like big furniture stores, right? It's not really what you expect to see in a downtown, but that's a artifact of some struggling that downtown had in the past. So my one concern is, I wouldn't want the city and the county, as largest property owners, to be tipping the vote. And it seems like maybe it's a razor's edge kind of thing on the petition. And sometimes, just getting the ball rolling makes it a fait accompli. And that might not be the message you're trying to send. So I guess I'm in favor of the delay and a little more information. But I'm in favor in bids in general.
Steve Ellis, Ward 4. I, I know I signed up for this assignment, because I, or this topic, because I just checked my email, and I noticed that I was on it. On the amendment, I'm urging you to postpone as well. My concern is actually a little bit different from the one that's been addressed so far, which is, in sort of signing up for the bid assessment, the city is basically acting like it is only a property owner downtown, rather than having responsibilities all over town. And making a commitment to make, you know, pay special additional fees, basically, do special additional work in one area over another area of town, gives me a little bit of heartburn. And if I understand it correctly, and that, this is why I have some qualms about what I'm saying, is that the, the city is going to turn over the money that it generally spends in the bid area for the bid board to allocate, but also pay in the extra bid assessment. And it's not a lot of money, but it is money that sort of goes out from under the sort of political side of resource allocation in the city to a more contractual arrangement. And that gives me a little bit of heartburn as well. So in addition to thinking about whether or not the city should push this over the 50% mark, which I do think is a legitimate concern, I think we also ought to take a little bit of delay and think about whether or not we should be committing the city to making special efforts in one part of town, without undergoing the usual sort of political process for deciding how the city spends its money. Thanks.
Is to postpone item 26 to September 30th, oh, excuse me, September 13. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
The motion.
The motion fails by a vote, it's of three to five, voting for Councilmember Tortorello, Councilmember Haikola, I mean, I'm sorry, Mayor Haikola, and Councilmember Lynn.
All right. That relieves us with the original motion. We have an, we have a motion to approve item number 26. Are there any questions on the council? Yes, sir.
Postponement is because this does have to come back to council. And I think at that point is when we will have a lot more of this information that we can decide on about final tallies, maps, all that stuff. And what we find out between now and then may alter how we all feel about it, I think. So, and again, the concerns about the city or the county tipping the scale, I agree with that as a valid, a valid criticism or concern. And I would, again, just encourage us, those that are collecting the signatures, try to get above that threshold without the city and the county being counted. And then, you know, see where we're at then. But that would be my preference. And again, that we'll have to make a final decision before anything goes forward. So I think going forward right now, we'll be able to get that information and then make a decision at a later date. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Okay, well, this is, oh, I thought you were making a hand. Motion is to approve item 26. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
The motion passes by a vote of six to two, voting against Councilmember Tortorello and Councilmember Lynn.
We didn't. Hearing none? They're out. Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you. And thank you for your patience and endurance.